Mayor Walker, all members of council are on the call and we're ready to start.
All right, thank you. I called this meeting to order for the Shawsville City Council. I hope you all are doing as well as possible and it's good to see your faces even from a distance. I'll just start by saying that on behalf of council, we appreciate all the work that you all are doing, attempting to keep the city stable in these very uncertain times and, you know, I sincerely appreciate each and every one of your efforts by trying to help sustain the workforce, while also taking care of yourselves and your family. And I hope that your families are doing well. And I hope that we, even though you are not seeing us, that you know that we are here and that we are attempting to do our best by you all. And I look forward to hearing and hope that the citizens feel a little bit more comfort with hearing what you all have been working on and planning and what future plans look like. I know there with so much uncertainty and fear, everyone is just looking for any ounce of stability that they can, you know, kind of grab and hold on to. So I appreciate you all for being that stability for them at time. I'm going to ask Clerk of Council to just do a quick roll call for council since we're not on, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Richardson. Thank you all.
Okay, it's Tina. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I am here.
I'm going to call the role in the normal seating arrangement for council chamber. Mr. Payne.
Here. Here.
Ms. Walker.
President.
Ms. McGill.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and the public. What we do have here today is basically discussion to talk about COVID-19 and the work that we have been doing since we declared the emergency. We have been trying to provide the community with as much information as possible through various means. Also too, we also have been providing the public with information through Seaville 60, which has been a great addition in terms of our, our ability to provide the public with information. And today is just to further that. I know that we've had a lot of discussions over the last few weeks in terms of what we're doing and many questions have been asked, not only from the council, but also from the public. And I know we share a lot of information with the council, but this is a great opportunity for us to provide the, the public with additional information from our various directors, who will be presenting today and to talk about what they're doing within their departments. What we've done for today is divided into two groups. And once we're done with one group, the next group will come on and present information. And council, if you have any questions about the duration of each presentation, we welcome the questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn it over and get it started. And our first presenter, if they would come on, and that'd be Mr. Alexander Ikafuna from NDS.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Good afternoon, councilors. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good afternoon, Alex. How are you?
Good. Well, today I just want to let everybody know that NDS is well and alive. And we are doing everything we're supposed to be with the exception of new submissions. In accordance with the emergency order, we are reviewing all pending developments received on or before March 12, 2020. Those include the site plans, plots, initial reviews, resubmissions, stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control plans. We are also receiving and also reviewing building permits, applications and doing inspections. Our property maintenance staff are also hard at work, inspecting and taking actions regarding nuisance abitments. Likewise, as zoning administrator, we have a lot of zoning activities going on at this point in time. Sending out letters, verification letters and then violation letters, including a renewal of Airbnb or homestay renewals. And we are also following up with ADA, review of street and sidewalk closures and also following up on the complaints. And then responding to daily inquiries. We'd also like to report out that the comprehensive plan process is also going on according to schedule. The steering committee is meeting. We had a few weeks ago, virtual steering committee meetings. There were about 40 people participating in that particular virtual meetings. The Star Hill Vision Plan, the updated draft has been submitted. And we have distributed that to appropriate city departments for review. Likewise, the Cherry Avenue, a couple of months ago, the planning commission had a work session on Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan. The comments from that planning commission work session has been compiled and resubmitted to the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, so they can take that into consideration in terms of updating the plan. The Rivanna Project Corridor Plan, which is being undertaken by Thomas Jefferson MPO, it's also going on at this point in time. And NDS is also providing the necessary support for the HOD mandated action plan and the supplemental funding of $246,000 that we received from HOD. In terms of staffing, currently we have two and three staff at NDS. And of those, 17 of our staff are telecommuting. In essence, they are working from home. Four of the staff have a combination of working at home and then coming into the office. Twice a week, our front desk staff are here, going through applications and emails and the checks received for permit process. And on a daily basis, we have two full-time staff here, myself and our plant examiner. The other staff do stop by the office from time to time. However, we have a tight control of staff stopping at the, stopping at the office during the regular hours, because we don't want to have more than four or three employees at one time in the office due to the compactness of our office. We are really worried about that. So the staff movement in terms of people stopping by the office to pick up something or print something or scan something, it's heavily regulated. Again, at any given point in time, we have a policy, internal policy that requires no more than four staff in the NDS office. The next steps, since we are looking at doing, next steps is beginning this Friday, May the 1st, from 10:00 AM to 12:00, we are looking at implementing a drop-off to increase the number of submissions and also provide expanded opportunity for applicants to fast-track submission of their applications to us. It will be for two hours on Friday, every Friday from 10 o'clock to 12 PM. We are also working with Public Works, Public Utilities, Fire Department in terms of accelerating the acquisition of the development review software and permit tracking. Hopefully, the funding will continue to be here, to be there, so we can be able to implement that as quickly as possible. The other consideration that is, we are looking at doing is the new submissions, because the emergency order prohibits submission of new SUP and rezoning applications. So how to deal with that going forward, that needs to be considered. And also the virtual planning commission meeting, so that those are applications when we can accept and the planning commission will be able to hear them, either virtually or one way or the other. Some of the changes NDS has put in place in order to enable us to continue to do our job has included, when I'm doing a virtual pre-construction review process, we are using the Zooms and the Teams for interdepartmental meetings and the meetings with the public. And we also participated in the Seaville 360 as a means of providing our information to the public in terms of our operations. Interdepartmental review process using the teams of applications we received. And there is a very innovative and a shout-out to our building inspections. We are doing a remote building inspection process right now, both onsite and remotely. In essence, our building inspectors engage the contractors and the builders who are zooming what's going on onsite to them and they can make a decision in the comfort of their homes. So we have experimented that. It's working and our inspectors are using it. So kudos goes out to our inspectors. We have also modified the plot signing. Usually, the chair of the planning commission signs the final plot, which is coordinated from the city attorney's office. But we have asked the chair of the planning commission to grant the planning director the authorization to sign the plot, so we don't have to wait for the planning commission. We've put that in place. And, and again, like I said, we've submitted, we've, we've proposed to implement the drop-off this Friday. I have a few statistics that I would like to share with the city council. For me, it was surprising that to me and my staff, in the first quarter of 2019, we had a 511 permits, total permits issued by NDS. And the first quarter of 2020, we had 434 permits issued, which is down by about 15%. The building permits on its own, 2021 first quarter, 140 permits. And in 2009, was 123 permits was issued in 2009. So the permits remains pretty high compared to last year. It's up by 14%, which is good. And in terms of the total value of the construction project based on the permit issued by NDS, in 2019, fourth quarter, was $62.3 million. In 2021 first quarter, where the total value was $65.3 million, an increase of 4.8%, which is good. The building inspections in the first quarter of 2019 was 1,344. And in 2020, we have 1,421 building inspections, which is up by 4.7%. The revenue, I'm sure the city council would be interested in this and the city manager as well. The revenues in 2019 first quarter, which is the first three months of the year, the revenue for 2019 was $302,000. In 2020, first quarter, we had $325,123, which is up by 7.5%. I can email this to council later on. So that was a surprise to us. Essentially, what it indicates is that our inspectors, the building permits, is still coming in, at least as of March, you know, the way it was coming in, in the first quarter of last year. Now, between now and the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, right now, we are not sure what's going to happen, you know, but as far as we are concerned, the, the construction industries, the building permit, the revenue from a permit has stayed relatively, relatively the same or if not increased, you know, compared to first quarter of last year. So that's where we are. And our staff has been doing a fantastic job in terms of the planning staff, doing their review remotely, the building inspectors figuring out a much better way to make sure that the deadlines are met and they provide the type of response that the construction industry is going to need us to provide. And we have some challenges. As everybody knows, this is a new way of doing things for now, that we are walking through those challenges. And one of the things that is to be considered later on is improving the way payments are being made, so that we have a more effective and responsive electronic payment using the credit card and what have you. So again, that's where we are. And again, I would like to have a shout-out to our staff, our planning staff that are working remotely and our inspectors.
I had a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Alex.
Yes, thank, first of all, thank you. And really want to echo the thanks to staff for all they're doing to work in this environment. My question is around, council's going to discuss at the end of this meeting, what broadening we may have in terms of the types of meetings that might go virtual, because there has been some flexibility provided from Richmond on how much can be happening remotely. And so let's just say hypothetically, that planning commission is determined to be a priority, so that we can continue to have some of those things moving forward. What, Alex, will your team need to do to be able to respond to that if that's a decision of council?
We are waiting for council, you know. We've started discussing that how, how that's going to take place. Of course, it will be a virtual meeting. We'll be working with the communication director. I think other communities are beginning to implement that. Just want to point out, every Friday, the Virginia, the Virginia planning directors, they have a, we have a roundtable conference on how each jurisdiction is doing, how everybody's handling this situation. And once the city attorney makes determination how we intend to comply with, I believe, House Bill 29 or 30 regarding a virtual meeting by the planning commission, we take it from there. But we've started discussing that particular process, how it's going to work, how we are going to implement that. I think it's going to be a challenge at the beginning, but we have to find a way to move forward in terms of that. And then, like city attorney suggested, you know, we may have to begin accepting the applications right now. We may not necessarily meet the timeline, you know, like SUP or rezoning, but at least we start preparing them, you know, just in case the city opens for business in a normal way. Then we already have them prepped up for necessary action.
And Alex, in terms of how much more time you may need to process those applications, have you thought about that?
We haven't thought about that. That is not going to be the regular time right now we are, we are, that we are using. Right now, we are meeting the timeline, our timeline. We are, we are getting things done in accordance with the statutory timeline. But going forward, if we continue to operate under the COVID-19 situation, you know, in terms of new submissions, dealing with the planning commission and stuff like that, we may not be able to meet that line. And we'll do whatever we can to make sure that things get done. However, I just want to point out, one of the challenges in terms of planning commission meeting virtually, is going to be an issue of equity, you know, whether the grassroots population, the people who live in neighborhood, whether they will have the means, you know, to actually be able to provide their comments, you know, in terms of a given application. But I guess those are some of the things we have to work out.
Yeah, so that's an important piece. And also making sure that whatever changes are made, that I would hope that we are structuring them around the staff's safety and well-being. So those timelines need, I would hope that we are always considering, you know, their health physically and mentally in those timelines. And I think if we're just upfront with the public about what they think, what we think they'll be, then, you know, that'll help everyone just know what they are. It'll be a slower process, but that, you know, we're making sure that people are safe.
That's correct.
Um, I have a question about, I know the Lytech credit applications were coming due right before everything kind of blew up. Where, what happened? Did that get frozen as well?
No, no, I think we did what we had to do to enable them to submit the application, you know. The city did its part. The planning commission took action. I believe there is a form the city was supposed to sign that is submitted along with the Lytech application. That form was signed. So I think everything is in order unless the state rejects the application. But at this point, I think the application was submitted on schedule. The approval they needed was received before the application was submitted.
About the South First Street project?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering if I wasn't even checking any other ones as well.
Yeah, I think the site plans are done for like Phase One and also Friendship Court. I think it's what, what's being worked out now is either the bond or something like that, that is being worked out now. And then the site plan will decide.
And thank you very much for that and also for your staff. And please send my thanks to everyone for what they're doing.
I will.
Thank you.
Any other question?
If we have some before you get off the call, we'll ask.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Counsel, the next presenter that we'll have is Chief Baxter from the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, members of council. Just going to give you a pretty high-level update on Fire Department, community and Emergency Operations Center operations in the COVID-19 environment. So three things we're going to talk about. Operations in the pandemic environment, the city COVID-19 incident management team, and then our Regional Emergency Operations Center for CFD. Since the declaration more than a month ago, all of our fire stations are closed to the public. And they're also closed to family members of our on-duty members. If they want to talk with them, they do it by cellphone in the parking lot. We're doing temperature checks when our folks arrive for duty and they have to complete a health affirmation, just as a screening process to make sure the workforce stays healthy. We canceled many weeks ago all leave for all of our chief officers. We've got only five civilian staff in our department and four of those five are teleworking. The fifth is our civilian fire mechanic who continues to work to maintain our heavy-duty fleet, our fire trucks and other equipment and maintenance issues as well. And then we have one assistant fire marshal, Alex referenced, plans review, who's conducting the fire component of plans review remotely. And then is also doing a small number of required inspections and checks remotely as well through video link with building owners and property owners. In terms of our emergency operations, that all begins with a 911 call, as everyone is aware. We've been doing various levels of call screening through the, the questions, the queries that our communications officers, that our regional ECC go through. And that's just, and we're not trying to diagnose COVID on the 911 line. We're just trying to give our responders an initial sense of whether or not this is a high or medium or low-risk response. We also suspended a number of weeks ago our basic life support first response. And so folks understand what that means. When there, when there are no ambulances available to the system volume, we will send a fire engine just to make sure somebody gets there. Those are generally low acuity calls. So we, we stopped doing that five or six weeks ago, just to reduce the risk to our responders as well. On all of our incidents now, we do what we refer to as a scout model, where we send in one of our firefighter EMTs or firefighter medics into the scene to do an initial assessment. It's essentially the same approach we would take on a hazardous materials call. We also, through the ECC, ask callers if they can safely do so to come outside or at least to come to the door. That's also critically important when we're responding to licensed care facilities, nursing homes, assisted living facilities. And then that initial provider, that initial firefighter or EMT or paramedic makes a very quick assessment about the level of personal protective equipment that's required and what kind of resources that they need. We still send the same resources to the call that we were sending before, but then we, we just make sure that there's a little bit more intention at the front end with, with who needs to actually be in there. All of our protocols in terms of dispatch and response are the same for Shawsville Fire, Shawsville Alamo Rescue Squad and all of the agencies that fall under the Alamo County Fire Rescue umbrella as well. In terms of PPE, we've been keeping up our practices with the CDC guidance, which has changed over time, initially driven by understanding of the disease plus also transmissibility. And then finally, the, the hard cold fact of, of the availability of PPE. All of that is done to try and create a balance between risk to our providers, to our firefighters and our EMTs and our medics and our other first responders and still being able to provide that level of service that our community expects and deserves. In terms of PPE, we have adequate stock right now for all of our, all of our folks. We are seeing some indication of some level of recovery in various components of the supply chain, but I would describe it as consistently inconsistent at this point. But it, we are in a better position than we were, say, 14 days ago in terms of PPE. We do have contingency plans in place and have for a couple of months now. Should we get to a really dire condition in terms of PPE, and that involves what we call powered air purifying respirators or PAPRs, which we already have, or if need be, self-contained breathing apparatus. And we've been in contact with some departments around the country who've had to take those steps before, so we're comfortable if we needed to move in that direction. The other thing I wanted to share about PPE is we've, through a great relationship that we've developed in our, all the time we spent together in the Emergency Operations Center with the county and the University of Virginia, UVA has agreed to fold in to their new UV light sterilization process, sterilization of N95s from first responders and hopefully down the road, potentially from some of our licensed care facilities as well. So we haven't had the need to do that yet, but that process is all set up. So that could extend the life of our PPE. It's a good example of a terrific partnership. We are, all of our folks receive a weekly, very detailed operations briefing. We have a common set of protocols that I mentioned, which includes a very robust post-exposure protocol, which has again changed over time as we've learned more and more about, about coronavirus and COVID-19. We've worked very closely every day with our long-term care facilities in the region. As people would know from, just from watching the news, that's been one of the highest-risk consequence groups in the US and around the world is, is folks that are in licensed care facilities. And we've seen a couple of those locally. Fortunately, they have not had the type of, you know, extreme outcomes that we've seen down in the Richmond area, but it's something we're spending a lot of time planning for and coordinating for. We've worked very closely again with the university on our EMS hospital transfer process to balance again, really good patient care with protecting our providers and minimizing the use of PPE and making sure that we can decontaminate our equipment, our personnel and our units and reduce the amount of time that they're out of service. So certainly a change in how we've historically done business. In terms of the city's incident management team, we're working on a seven-day operational period now. Uh, we have an incident action plan that gets pushed out every seven days. Our strategic goals, which um, if you've been watching Steveville 360, folks will be familiar with these. Providing essential services, protecting our vulnerable populations, protecting our first response community and all of our essential workers uh, and sustaining the healthcare system. Within that incident management team, uh, we have four major branches, uh, each of which has their own set of incident objectives, uh, human services, uh, public safety, uh, logistics, um, and finance and administration. Um, one of the areas of focus that our IMT has uh, really pivoted towards in the last two weeks um, is recovery and transition planning. Um, you've seen uh, probably information from the federal level. There's a report out from the Governors Association uh, in the US. Uh, we started that process several weeks ago uh, to build a model um, for uh, how to think about and then plan for recovery and transition. So we're right now at a mitigation phase and then we project forward three different phases of recovery and transition. So some of the things that we're trying to make sure that we do and uh, one of our deputy chiefs, uh, Deputy Chief Joe Powers uh, with the Fire Department is working with every department in the city to work through a facilitated, facilitated process. It's very structured. We collect a lot of data and, and information. What we're trying to do is capture uh, some of what Alex talked about. Some of the processes that we're doing now in this environment are very efficient um, and might be things that we want to keep doing moving forward. So we're really trying to capture those um, and make sure that we don't miss an opportunity here, right? So every crisis is an opportunity. Um, but also we want to make sure that the space, uh, when we do reopen uh, to Mayor Walker's point about the safety and health of our workforce, that we're taking the, the correct steps in terms of engineering the spaces so that the work can take place uh, in a safe environment for both our employees and for our, our residents and our, our citizens and our customers. So uh, that process is ongoing and will likely be ongoing um, for the foreseeable future. Uh, as we learn, uh, as we apply these various uh, strategies and tactics to a recovery and transition phase and, and learn what works and what doesn't. Another important, critically important point in terms of the strategy for recovery and transition is we recognize that based on experience uh, in other communities in the US and around the world that we need to plan for going back to more restrictions. So um, if there were to be another bloom of the disease, we'd want to make sure that we had that uh, nailed down in terms of our protocols and our policies and our procedures. Uh, so we can do that as efficiently as possible. In terms of uh, our regional focus, um, we, as folks probably are aware also, when the emergency declaration is declared at the local level, that activates our regional emergency operations plan, which is the city, the university and the county. We share that EOP. Um, we've been working under a unified command uh, since that day. Uh, and that includes representative from the Thomas Jefferson Health District, representative from the city, uh, the university and the county. Um, and in all pandemics, the health department is the lead agency. So we are there to support uh, the, the health department and all of their efforts. And they are there to inform us um, about what we need to know to operate safely uh, in this environment. At the regional level, we are also operating uh, on a seven-day operational period. Uh, and we have an incident action plan that is really fed by uh, the IAPs that are developed by the city and the county. So they're, they're all aligned. Uh, some of the areas of focus uh, in the regional EOC, uh, we stood up a JIC or a Joint Information Center uh, when this got started, um, and they are um, uh, highly functional. I referenced earlier the focus on our long-term care facilities. Uh, we had the National Guard in uh, for the last several days assisting staff at those facilities uh, with N95 fit testing. And so that's a critical component. If, if you can get the N95, that's great, but if they haven't been fit tested. Um, so that's a, an important logistical consideration. Uh, that partnership with our regional EOC, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management uh, and the National Guard, that's exactly how that's supposed to work. Again, at the regional level, focus on our vulnerable populations. Uh, over the last weekend, uh, we moved a number of our homeless population that were particularly high risk uh, into hotels. Um, and that has relieved some of the pressure on the, on the shelters that we had set up initially and allows them to be safer and healthier and maintain social distancing within those environments. Um, we continue to coordinate um, on a regular basis uh, between the health system and our EMS system uh, to make sure that we're really in lockstep in terms of our understanding of the risk and our procedures. Um, a lot of the uh, grassroots volunteer and donation efforts that began wonderfully just within the community organically um, have been folded into a, a little bit more structured environment through the Emergency Operations Center, uh, what we call ER17, which is manages uh, volunteers and donations. That seems to be working well. We've also worked uh, very closely with the area funeral homes on uh, decedent affairs, which is not a topic that people want to talk about. Um, but it's very, very important uh, in this environment. And we've talked about that before in various forums of um, how people struggle um, when they lose a loved one. Um, they want to come together and, and have a funeral as we all would. Uh, but that's a risky proposition in this environment. So we're trying to work with people to make sure that they understand the risks and um, and have all the protocols and policies in place and the relationships to make that as, as smooth as it can be. Um, and our current roles in the, in the EOC include uh, so unified command. Um, we have, uh, CFT has supplied also a deputy operations section chief um, and a fire and EMS branch director and a number of other personnel as well. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you um, for the update. Um, I, my first question is just the seven-day operation period. Um, what would trigger that to change more rapidly or when? Like, when does that change? And um, what would be the steps down or steps up from that and what would trigger it?
Sure, it's a good question. So one of the roles of the Planning Section Chief in any incident like this, really at any level, is to determine the, the appropriate length of an operational period. Uh, when we started this process, uh, we were thinking about it in 24-hour jumps. Um, and because we were ramping up so quickly, uh, and then we went to a 72-hour. Um, and then uh, several weeks ago, we went to the, the seven-day. Basically, one of the things that would require us to move to a much shorter period rapidly would be a sudden catastrophic event, for example. Uh, sometimes we refer to that as an incident within an incident. So if we had something else happen uh, that was very high risk, that might have, might not have anything to do with COVID. If we had a major fire or a plane crash or a train crash or an MCI or a, a secondary outbreak, um, where we would have to regroup and analyze our strategy and our incident objectives very, very quickly to potentially redeploy all these resources. Uh, that's one of the things that would trigger um, um, you know, sort of a retraction to a much shorter um, operational period. Uh, and then in the other direction, um, if we are meeting once a week to review our IAP um, and we realize that nothing has changed in the last week or the last two weeks, then we probably don't need to continue to meet at that, at that pace, right? So um, it's, it's really more of an art than a science. Um, and our, in our world, we'd much rather be accused of having spent too much time planning. Because that's where you can solve problems with a very, very low risk.
Are there any other questions?
Um, I just had a question around the process that's being followed to engage with the departments and what kind of the ramp up looks like. And then I, you mentioned the thing we, none of us want to talk about, but if we have to find ourselves re-engaging in this again, um, obviously we've learned a lot of lessons from that. Can you kind of just go over like where you are in terms of documenting that? Um, it's something I think might be of interest for us to see.
Sure, so we sat down several weeks ago and, and sort of had a brainstorming session about uh, about this, this topic um, and did some research, um, have since uh, formed a partnership with some folks at the Baton School to really be intentional about looking around the world um, for the, for communities that have gone through this process already. And they're reporting back to us at the end of this week. But uh, we found some uh, some documents um, uh, online and through various sources that provided some information about what the triggers are for those phases. Um, and then uh, we had created essentially spreadsheets um, that Deputy Chief Powers goes and speaks with all the uh, departments about to identify essentially what were you doing, what were your services before this happened? What are you doing now? Um, and in Phase One, based on those criteria. So for example, if, if what you want to do next involves groups of 50 people and Phase One is only limiting you to 10 people, well, then you're not going to be, be able to do that activity, right? Uh, but Phase Two, you could. Um, and then what would it take you from today to ramp up to that? Um, and that looks different in every department. So Alex mentioned uh, some changes they're going to need to make to the physical space and NDS um, and, and moving to an electronic system, uh, a digital system for some of the work that they do. That's going to be very different than a summer camp for kids. Um, that's going to be very different um, than perhaps how CPD will go about changing uh, back to some of the, their um, practices and in terms of a traffic stop or something like that. Um, so recognize that the process, sort of the steps of the process need to be the same. But that it's going to be very different and nuanced for each department.
Actually, I would ask because I just think that we are obviously getting questions from the community around like what the next X number of time looks like. And I just think as background information, it's just helpful to kind of understand what is that forecast looking like so that we can start to manage our expectations. I mean, you mentioned summer camps, which is something I know that both private and public camps are going to be hearing from parents about and wondering how it's going to be handled. So I'm just asking because the more that we can kind of be armed with information that's able to be shared with council, I think it would help us to kind of relay that to our constituency, so.
And, and there's these type of activity going on. And I think Chris Engel can probably speak to what's happening uh, in the Chamber of Commerce. Um, they've, they've got uh, their own project set up, which is region-wide, as I understand it. And we've got at least one of our members participating in that as well. And um, this is, we're, we're driving the train and laying the track at the same time. But we're happy to share that we learned through this process uh, with the community at any point.
And in terms of um, the, could you discuss more around the, is there still an expectation of um, a local peak? What does that look like? Are we following the same guidelines that the governor laid out for Phase One? Um, of reopening, what are those discussions?
Yes, we, we are, uh, our planning, um, our intention would be to, as we've tried to do all along, is to tie um, our, our operations in, in the fire side of things and EMS and all that. And in terms of this citywide recovery planning to uh, CDC, VDH or any other um, valid source that we can find, understanding that a lot of this is, is new. Um, but yes, in terms of the transition, um, I, I think there's a common understanding now that the 14-day period of a consistent reduction in, in new cases is really uh, is really the most appropriate way to think about moving to the next phase. That said, um, I think everyone understands that if testing is still limited as it is today, that there's a degree of risk associated with that. Um, so I think that's why myself and many, many other, a lot of smarter people than I am have said that the key here moving forward in the medium term and the long term is the availability of test, accurate testing uh, to be able to help us navigate through these various phases.
So the work that you all are doing um, at the EOC, that is taken into consideration that we haven't been able to ramp up testing. And that is a factor that's factoring into all the decisions um, to make sure that we're keeping sta- staff and citizens safe.
Yes, uh, actually, one of the primary areas of focus initially with the Emergency Operations Center was to make sure that regionally, we had the plans in place in terms of logistics and um, uh, and the actual, you know, plans themselves to set up a community-based testing. And so those have been um, ready to go uh, for several weeks now. Um, the limiting factor simply has been the availability of tests. We're starting to see more of that in the community. There were, um, there was one in Savannah last week. Um, I understand that Martha Jefferson is working with some folks in the city to do one at 500 South First Street. Um, and those are all terrific, but they are, in terms of scale, those are all incredibly small scale uh, compared to the overall population, just even of, of Charlottesville. So um, hopefully some, I know there's a lot of, of, uh, a lot of great work going on trying to um, increase that testing capacity. So that really is the, is the variable that's, that's probably the most important at this point.
Yeah, Martha Jefferson originally offered 50 tests and we were able to talk them into considering 150. And now we're about at 100. And then if there are more people that show up, that will, they'll do that, you know, to, to the best of their ability. But um, even getting that number stretched was a challenge.
Sure, and I, and I should say, you know, in terms of the um, having worked with them very closely for these last couple of months, both the health department and the hospital, the health systems and hospitals have been, you know, with a limited number of tests, they've been trying to use them, husband them for the people that are the sickest. And that, and that is going to drive how, the, the care that they receive. And I think that makes sense, but um, the, as I said, the ultimate solution is that we don't have to compete in any way, shape or form for tests. Um, so yeah, a lot, a lot more work to be done there.
And one more for me um, that um, you know, in terms of talking about any challenges, um, Mr. Icafuna talked about that within his department. Um, what are, and that was one of my questions, so I didn't even have to ask you before. But in terms of challenges, um, not just um, from the incident command or EOC, but in terms of your department, are you experiencing any um, at this time?
So one of the advantages that we have in the fire service, um, we really are a family. We spend a third of our working lives together in a very communal environment. We go to the grocery store together, we eat meals together, we work out together. And every once in a while, we risk our lives together. Um, so it's a, it's a very tight group and that gives us an incredible strength um, in this type of environment. Um, that said, you know, everyone here is uh, as you said, when we, when we started talking, um, not just concerned about uh, doing their job, which they're doing superbly every day. But they're also concerned about their families and their loved ones. And my concern in terms of, of our workforce and our firefighters and, uh, you know, all the, all the first response community is, is sustainability. Um, we talked in the IMT about, you know, a couple of months ago, I was saying this is a marathon, not a sprint. Well, the reality is this is an ultra marathon and we're even at a water stop. Um, and so we've got to think about, um, you know, I, I mentioned canceling leave. We canceled leave for our chief officers and above, but we didn't do that for captains and firefighters. Um, and that's intentional. Um, it's probably costing us a little more money uh, in overtime, to be honest. But um, I think it's important that our folks can cycle out um, when they need to and, and decompress and uh, take care of their families and um, because we're going to be in this for the long haul. And we do recognize also that those of us, particularly in public safety and um, are really part of the infrastructure of the community. So we, we can't not be here, we can't not be really good at what we do. That's not an option. Um, so yeah, good question, thank you for asking the question. And uh, really the long-term sustainability uh, is the most important thing. We have a, a very robust behavioral health strategy. We have an internal peer support team. Uh, Admiral County Fire Rescue has a peer support team. The mental health community um, in the greater Charlottesville area has been incredibly supportive, particularly since 2017. Um, we have relationships with clinicians, um, we, we get fed. Um, so um, yeah, we'll, we'll just try and focus on the same things that we tell the community, right? So stay connected, take care of yourselves, exercise, eat well, sleep when you can.
We had a stark reminder of how hard this is on our first responders.
Yes, we did.
And so that was um, something that I had to flip the page, but I had highlighted. So council and leave, I, you know, I just assumed that there's no one, even if you are home, um, you are not on vacation, right? And so um, and people are not really traveling unless they have to take care of our family that no one else can take care of is what. So could you talk a little bit about what that means, counseling leave? Like if people need just a moment, um, a day or so, they are able to do that or no? What is?
So our, uh, the bulk of our workforce are at the rank of firefighter and captain. Um, so their vacations and holidays are essentially unchanged. And if they need time off, they take time off. For our uh, battalion chiefs and above, battalion chiefs, deputy chief, fire chief, um, we're just now beginning to say, okay, it's time to, to think about taking some time off. What we wanted to make sure that we did was set up all the systems um, and protocols and procedures and policies and make sure that we had everything in place to support. and protocols and procedures and policies and make sure that we had everything in place to support that which is the, the vast majority of our workforce that's out there, sort of at the, you know, on the tip of the spear every day, which are our firefighters and our captains. So it's a, it's a balance, but I think we're in a pretty good spot right now. But it's, then we're going to keep a, you know, keep a sharp eye on.
We've had, or I know we've had the two, two, one budget discussions. And I know that it's still something that's being processed at that level. But I've stated, I know other counselors, that we do acknowledge that there's, you know, people within the city that are doing work that other people are not doing and that are risking their safety and their family's safety in a way that other people are not doing. And so we acknowledge that and it will be a top priority whenever we are, you know, stable to make sure that that is acknowledged in some kind of compensation form. And so that is the discussion that I will continue to have. And I just hope that you all know that and understand that we do understand that the work that you all are doing are, is different.
Thank you. I'm sure firefighters will, you know, appreciate hearing that from you. It's, it's, it's nice to hear. Thank you.
I have two questions. One, with the PPE, is there any sense at the moment about whether right now there is any, there is sufficient PPE to cover not just some of the first responders and healthcare workers, but essential workers like bus drivers, grocery store workers, et cetera, as well as, you know, we haven't really had significant community spread here yet, like a lot of other localities have. And is there any sense if we do see rapid, more large scale community spread, that that would start to potentially strain our supply of PPE? And then the second question is, it's talked a little bit, but like, let's say, you know, we go through a transition period and you know, the, the economy's opened up a little bit in, in Virginia, but a year from now, we see like a second wave come back. Is there any plan in place to respond to that second wave that's, you know, months or a year down the line and very rapidly?
So on, on the PPE question, I think we're not in a position yet to say that the supply chain is robust enough to where some of those sort of, I would say secondary and tertiary, if you will, folks that are out in the community, providing a level of service. And I don't mean that in a negative way at all, but you know, that's why that guidance right now is for cloth masks. I can envision a time when a grocery store chain will, as part of their business, supply all of their staff with a surgical mask. But the supply system right now simply could not sustain that. And correctly, businesses and business owners are, at least in my experience, following the guideline of, of that's, that's the appropriate place for a cloth mask. And remember, there's different purposes for the masks, right? So when we're talking about PP in our environment, we're talking about not just protecting the patient, but protecting the providers. And that's where the actual respirator comes into play. The purpose of the cloth mask and even the surgical mask for people out in the community, for the most part, is to protect them from, from infecting other people by, by containing their droplets. So I, I can see that happening, but we're not at that point yet. And in terms of, i- is there something coming down the pike potentially that could really strain and stress our current stocks of PPE and, and ability to replenish? Absolutely. That's why I'm pretty cautious about saying I'm comfortable right now, but something could happen. In terms of a second wave, I think our response to the second time something happens will be more efficient if it, if it happens. And it's one of the reasons we really wanted to do this recovery transition planning with some serious focus and some serious intention to capture what works well in all of the phases. So that going in the other direction shouldn't be that much of a challenge. The other thing I would suggest about whether a, another wave in six months or 12 months, think about what we knew 30 days ago or 60 days ago, right? And project that forward sort of logarithmically into the future. Testing will be different in six months. There's no question about that, right? In 12 months, 18 months, maybe there's a vaccine that provides some coverage. In six months, we should have a much clearer understanding of whether or not exposure confers immunity, which is a game changer in terms of how we react to, plan for and react to a second wave, if that were to occur. The other thing about waves is, is timing, right? So if another wave happens during a peak of a traditional influenza season, that's a, you know, that's a, a potential series of risks there. The good thing about that is that we now know, I think in a way that those of us in, in the health professions have been shouting from the mountaintop for many, many years, we know what prevents transmission of these diseases, right? And social distancing, hand hygiene, cough etiquette, vaccination, healthy habits, those are going to be the strategies regardless. So it's, it's a, it's a great question and we're thinking a lot about that.
Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate the work that you and your team are doing.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Baxter. Moving forward to answer some of the questions that came up within his presentation, especially as it pertains to economic development, we do have Chris Engel up next.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, greetings from the Office of Economic Development. It's good to see everybody. It's been a while. Want to walk you through some of the updates that we've encountered, activities that we've been involved in over the last 45 days that have been a little different than our normal activities, but we're adapting and, and we're doing well. Want to tell you that the first thing we did long about the middle of March was we reactivated what we used to do on a regular basis, which was an email blast to business owners that we have in our, in our list. We had kind of gotten away from that with the advent of social media. And absence a significant crisis, people don't always want to hear from us as often as they might when, when things change. So we reactivated that email blast list, about 650 folks are on that. And we started doing regular communications to them just to let them know that we were here, started to provide them lists of resources, links, links to webinars, how to videos, things of that nature. Primarily focused at the business community that was starting to feel this even in the first week or two. And those messages, we've done over 10 of those now, 12 of those actually, to be exact. And the open rates are above 50% on almost all of them. The click through rates are in the high twenties. And, and these are numbers that we're not typically used to seeing in a normal time. We would get, you know, actually bothering to open a message. So it sent a signal to us that people were hungry for information and they wanted to know that we were available for assistance, that we would answer the phone, that we would answer an email. And so that's been a good, that was a good first step that we did in the week, the first week of the emergency. We now maintain an extensive business resource page on our home web, webpage for the Office of Economic Development. That's kind of a running list of access, federal, state, local resources, and that's updated daily. And people are, are visiting that for good information. We also did real quickly in that first week, this is going to seem like a small item that probably shouldn't even be mentioned, but it did mean a lot to a number of retail and restaurant businesses that transitioned quickly from in-house to curbside pickup, delivery, takeout options. And what we did was the grab and go curbside pickup signage that you all have seen. We did this in a, in a 48 hour period from idea to implementation, which was rather rapid. And we had some support from, some design support from a local company and a printing, printer support as well to get those in place. There are 20 of those around town now. And we have received countless comments, positive comments in terms of what that meant to those businesses just to have that sign put in place. There's actually no enforcement that comes with that sign. But the community has been respectful of them nonetheless. Thank the city manager and the traffic engineer for quickly agreeing to support us in that effort as the Office of Economic Development has no authority or ability to put up signs around town. But, but they were supportive of that. We were able to do that quickly. So moving on to some of the more significant items that we have put in place, our Economic Development Authority met in an emergency session in late March, and we had crafted some tweaks to existing programs and a couple of new programs as well that they were willing to support with some reserve funds. And we quickly launched those, first of April, we la- we launched the first one, which is called the Brace Grant. And Brace stands for Building Resiliency Among Charlottesville Entrepreneurs. It's a takeoff on an, an existing program, which is known as the ACE Program, which is advancing Charlottesville entrepreneurs. So we tweaked it to focus on building resiliency and encourage folks to apply that had a specific desire to pivot their business, given the situation, and they needed some help with that. Realizing the severity of the situation, we also allowed some of those funds to be used for what would be traditional fixed costs, which would normally be outside of the purview of an ACE program. But we, so we allowed a kind of a 50 50 split for folks to apply there. We were overwhelmed with applications in 48 hours. We had 150 applications. We've been through those. We've processed 70 awards and that most, 90% of that money is out the door now. The average grant was $1,200. Some examples include a local company actually joined in the production of PPE using some of their equipment to cut face shields. They needed the materials to do that. The grant paid for those materials and the delivery of those materials. Restaurants that transitioned to online or retail that transitioned to online were using point of sale systems that they needed some assistance with. So other examples. Some folks bought equipment that was in limbo, given the situation. And they were able to continue forward with, with those purchases. And that was eight. Moving on to the second one, which was the Business Equity Fund. This was established about a year ago by council with a contribution to the Community Investment Collaborative. It's a loan, revolving loan fund for socially disadvantaged individuals. And so it has a bit of a track record. We knew it was working well and we simply added some capital to that. And we tweaked some of the parameters around which grants, excuse me, loans could be made there. We changed the amount, lowered the interest, created a longer payback period and allowed six months to have no payback for the, for the first six months. So we, we added some funds to that and CIC is managing that for us. We've made 13 referrals. They've made eight approvals and funds are flowing to those eight. There's several more that are kind of in the review process. And imperative to this process was a quick turnaround and unlike the usual process that CIC engages in, as well as what we typically engage in, which is in-person interviews, conversations, getting to know folks. This all had to be done quickly and had to be done online. So there's an online application for this. There's an online referral process and that has been worked out fairly smoothly. Average turnaround is about a week on, on those applications. So the next item was the existing program called Go Hire. And one of our growing opportunities programs and Go Hire was a program that helped hire an individual to a company and helped with a wage subsidy for the first six, eight weeks or helped with a training component for an incumbent worker. We tweaked the program to allow not only a new hire or a training component, but to allow a rehire or to retain an existing employee. This kind of goes hand in hand with the federal programs that are, are trying to provide funds to allow companies to maintain their staff and not lay them off. So we, we re-initiated this program on the 14th of April. We've since closed that. We've had 50 apps. And we're in the process of making awards. We've got 30 awards that are being made. And those average $3,300 on average. And those are in the process. This is a reimbursement based grant, so reimbursement materials have to be provided to prove that they've incurred the cost and we're in the process of processing those, those grants as those documentation, documents are received. And so we've had a, a great response to that one as well and a variety of different business types around, around town, taking advantage of that. So another, another example of one of our programs. The final one is the, is the newest one and the one that was released most recently on April the 24th, and that's what is called the Business Recovery Fund. This is a partnership with the, with the County of Albemarle, who has heretofore never done anything of this nature. As we've been building a relationship between our office and the, the Office of Economic Development in the county, we have tried to explore opportunities to do things together more often. And this is one where there was some synergy right out of the gate. And of course, partnering with CIC to administer this program as well. It's a loan program that has flexible terms similar to the BEF, but a broader range of applicants can apply. Any city or county business can apply. It has flexible repayment terms. So six months, no payments, two to three year payback periods and a low interest rate. And like I said, that opened on the 24th. There's a two week application period. And in the first three days, there were 78 applications that came, came through the, the online portal. The most promising item for, for, for this, in addition to the funds that the EDA put forward and the county put forward, is the potential for private dollars to come alongside these funds and amplify, leverage them. And can't announce that yet, but we're hopeful within the next week that there's an announcement of significant additional dollars joining for these, the Business Recovery Fund. So we'll transition quickly into update on some of our workforce development initiatives during this period. We have transitioned to virtual learning for two of our training programs. Both the Go Cook program and the Trade Builders program were in process in the middle of March. So they were partially through their six or eight week training period. We took a brief pause to kind of collect ourselves and figure out what to do and how to do it. But now both of those have transitioned into an online learning environment, which has been a bit of a transition, but both are, are moving forward smoothly now. As you know, our, our downtown job center located in the library was closed along with everything else. And that is a very hands-on, high-touch, personal engagement process that we have with people to provide them assistance there. We've had to now transition that completely to, to virtual and using Teams or Zoom meetings to engage with folks. We are doing that with some success. We are creating lists of, of employers that are actually hiring and there are some in our community that continue to hire. We're making connections to people that are out of work and that need access to that. And we're doing that virtually now. We are exploring our, our typical job fair, community job fair happens in May. Obviously won't happen this year, but we are exploring through, through some software opportunities to do a virtual job fair on a large scale. Our community job fair typically has over 100 employers and over 1,000 attendees held at the John Paul Jones Arena. So we're going to, to, to try this out. We're going to start on a smaller scale with a business expo first, which is a we'll use the same software, but at a much smaller level. And then hopefully if that goes well, transition to a a community job fair later in the year, probably June or July, as opposed to the typical timeframe, which is May. We're working with people on their resumes remotely and online, and we've been able to do that fairly effectively so far. We are also working with employers and doing online Facebook Live interviews once or twice a week with those employers that are continuing to hire. once or twice a week with those employers that are continuing to hire and allowing recording those, posting those, allowing people to access those at their leisure to learn a little bit more about the company and about the opportunity that might be available and then make a connection from there. Transition to our Home to Hope program, which came under our our management earlier this year, and we've been transitioning with those folks as well. Everybody's working well remotely and occasionally in the office as needed. You all have probably heard that there's been an effort to decrease the number of individuals that are incarcerated during this time to to decrease the opportunity for the spread of the virus. And so state officials have been moving towards more home electronic monitoring. As such, the Peer Navigators with Home to Hope are seeing an increase in in demand for those services to kind of help with supportive services as people transition back into or out of incarceration, back get back into this community. So we've seen a twenty-five percent increase in the last month in folks coming through through that that portal. And they have a hundred and two active clients that they're working with at the moment. One of the initial things that the Home to Hope folks participated in was for clients and others in need. And those those were put together and distributed at the Downtown Transit Center. Within the first week or two, there was two, two days when that happened. We're also increasing the online presence with continued communication about Home to Hope Services, and that happens every Friday with the Facebook Live. Those have been happening over the last month and have been well-received. That goes for about an hour every Friday. Also this week, starting virtual peer support groups, which will be a new thing in the virtual environment, but those will be starting tomorrow. We also had the Peer Navigators taking calls on the community hotline, which is managed through Human Services. And so they were having calls directed to their cell phone and they were engaging in the assistance that is provided through that network early on. We'll transition quickly to another aspect of our operations, which is parking. And let you all know that all our facilities are open and operational twenty-four seven, and they are seeing some use. With respect to staff, our operator, which is a private operator that we manage, we've instructed them to avoid layoffs and they have done so. Some some shifts in hours have been tweaked to meet the demand, but no one has been taken below thirty hours per week, which allows them to keep benefits intact. You are probably also aware that we allowed folks with monthly parking to suspend their permits if they were not using them, and they have. That that continues. Happened in April. It will happen in May as well, and we take that on a month-to-month basis. We're taking the opportunity with fewer cars in the facilities to do some deep cleaning, not only on the elevators and rails and things of that nature, but also the actual decks. And with that cleaning, we're doing in-house restriping of all the spaces and some other stair repairs and contractor repairs that are safety-related are also being done during during this time. Chief Baxter mentioned, and I'll I'll close with with this final mention of Project Rebound, which is a regional initiative led by the Chamber with support by the city, economic development, the county economic developments, and the university's economic development efforts. And Project Rebound is essentially an effort to gather folks to consider how we recover, how we restart, how we do that safely, how we do that efficiently. And the the approach is to gather around seven subject matter sectors, if you will, and gather people within sites and experience in each of those areas to participate in some some meetings. There will also be some public sessions whereby folks can engage as they will from the general public, in addition to the to the more structured meetings. With the idea that in early June, that a blueprint or a guidebook will be presented to the community that has significant input from from business owners and operators throughout the area that will hopefully be a guide for for the community as it as it restarts. Don't know what that's going to look like coming out of the other end. We've got a lot of positive feedback on it since it's been announced. It was announced last week. We've had over a hundred and thirty people sign up to be part of one of the different committees at this point. So we're getting we're getting some good engagement so far. We're getting some facilitation resources from the university to help facilitate all these meetings in a professional manner. And we're hopeful that early June, there will be a document that will be useful to the community as we start to recover. You know, the chief made a reference to an ultra marathon, that this is an ultra marathon, not a marathon. And having participated in a couple ultra marathons myself, I don't appreciate that reference because I know the pain that that comes towards the end. And you know, we're going to experience that as this continues forward. There's no doubt in my mind. This started as a public health crisis and certainly still is. But it will it will end as an economic crisis of significant proportions that this community hasn't seen probably ever. So we're starting to prepare for that in the long the long-term nature of of that recovery is going to be with us for a while. So I'll end there in answering questions that you might have related to our our office's activities.
So I was disconnected from the call for about five minutes, so I missed a chunk of that. So that happened there, but so if I ask anything or if I email you later, I'll just check in with the council members and see if you know, if I missed any anything that I really. But when I came back in, you were talking about staff numbers and a reduction and no one dropping below thirty. And just if you could just tell me a little bit more about that. Hello?
Folks that work in the parking facility that are third-party contractors. All of our staff, the thirteen people that are part of the Office of Economic Development, which includes the four Home to Hope program, Peer Navigators are continuing to work mostly remotely. No changes to hours or pay for any of us. On the linear parking side, there has been the facilities are open and they are staffed and nobody's hours has been reduced below thirty. We just kind of shifted some some positions to to better make use of time and talent, given the circumstances. So that's what that reference was.
And they were working forty hours before or is that a ten-hour a week reduction? Just trying to.
I'm sorry, was there was there another question?
Yes, were they working forty hours before?
Some of them were, depending on their their week, but it was they were ranging in thirty to forty.
And are they paid through the parking enterprise? Like, how is that paid?
Oh, well, they're paid by their employer, which is Linear Parking, but it comes from revenues from the facility.
I have a question. Chris, as you're talking through some of the workforce or workforce development initiatives, where are you hearing about people who are not able to collect unemployment? Can you give me a sense of the types of jobs that are out there that people who are being laid off or whatever can't collect unemployment from? And therefore, like, it's even more of a priority for them to make sure they find new opportunities? I'm just curious of what kind of patterns you're seeing with that, because it seems like right now the federal plan is a lot more flexible, what we've seen historically relative to unemployment. This is a question I'm going to ask at the end of this whole thing, anyway.
It is. I don't know that we've heard of anybody that's not been able to get unemployment insurance at this point. The the guidelines have been broadened to allow ten ninety-nine in contractors, self-employed, which is which is a significant change. There's been an additional benefit, the pandemic unemployment assistance at the federal level. And actually, we'll go into too many details, but one of the challenges that we are seeing is that some businesses are thinking and and planning for for rehiring. They want to rehire. But the the benefits associated with the usual state-level unemployment benefits plus the the pandemic unemployment assistance, the PAU, are such that some people are better off not to go back to their job. Which kind of creates a conundrum. If businesses want to open and they can't get their workforce back because the workforce is being paid more handsomely, you know, with the benefit package at the moment, now that's a temporary thing. It won't last forever. In fact, July is the timeframe when the PAU sunsets. So so that will work itself out. It may be tweaked in the in the near term to to allow that to happen. There's also some interpretation about are you eligible to continue to receive it if you are offered your your position back? I think that's being looked at, but we have heard some employers are are hearing that their employees don't want to come back at the moment because of the benefit.
And I'd heard that too. And the other thing I've heard that's making it complicated is for their PPP loans, they have to have a certain percentage of people on payroll during that a certain length of time in order to even get that loan to be something that they can they can acquire. And so that seems to be it's, you know, two different systems that are kind of working against each other, unfortunately.
Yes, I would agree. It's some unintended consequences of some good intentions, I think, but you're right. The PPP dollars, which we have heard of successful local companies receiving those are predicated on keeping or using at least seventy-five percent of those funds towards keeping your current staff. So if folks accept those dollars, they need to then use them for staffing purposes. Otherwise, they they risk what is could be a grant turning into an actual loan that requires repayment. So that that's that's a bit of a challenge. I didn't want to mention, since you brought up the unemployment claims, we we keep track on these numbers and in March, the end of March fourteenth, the weekend in March fourteenth, there were seventeen unemployment claims. The weekend in March the fourth, there were nine hundred and eighty-five. So it went up and up and up. So it went from seventeen to like five hundred to six hundred to nine nine eighty-five. And one piece of good news is the most recent week for which we have data went back down to to six hundred or so. So collectively, since this started, that represents about three thousand individuals in the city of Charlottesville as a residence that were previously working and then now are moved have have claimed unemployment insurance.
And I think, you know, just to add to that conversation, you know, some of the concerns are the amount of time that it takes, and that's a question that I have for you at the end about the small business loan, is that process going more smoothly now? I know there were some hiccups there. But in terms of unemployment, you know, people had to be laid off to apply in the first place. That time between application and receiving funds, luckily, we have the emergency assistance fund that people were able to tap into. But that were, you know, did not, you know, assist with all of the needs. And so the fear there is this this kind of, you know, tug of war with when you need me, you bring me back. When you don't need me, I'm dropped. That is, you know, the the fear that people have. And so I would just be interested in what that conversation is, you know, what conversation is having, our business owners having, because you know, the employee and the consideration of, you know, those ebb and flows that their life will go through is is hard on families.
Yeah, agreed. They did tweak some of the rules. There used to be a one-week waiting period for unemployment insurance. They reduced that to a day. So that did help. There still was a backlog with VEC, the online application they wanted everybody to do was painful and took some time. The phone lines were jammed. That's probably getting a little better, but it's still probably a challenge for folks to navigate that. But those dollars are flowing quicker than they ever have before. On the SBA Economic Injury Disaster Loan, commonly referred to as the IDOL loan or grant, that one's probably been the most frustrating to folks, and you've certainly read about that locally and nationally. This was a program that, you know, typically in a year, I think, you know, would do fourteen thousand loans and in in a month, they were asked to do, you know, like one point four million. And so their system was completely unprepared. They've gone through two new server setup systems to to handle the online apps. We still have not heard very much good news about the IDOL grant or loan. It is set up to be partially a grant and then partially a loan. And we were encouraging folks to apply for the for the loan and take the grant piece, which was a ten thousand dollar advance. We have not heard of very many. We've heard of a few very many folks being terribly successful with that. It's been frankly frustrating for them to kind of go through that that process. The Small Business Development Center is our lead local agency on that. They've been doing a great job guiding people through that process. They are kind of a subsidiary of the SBA, but they are supported locally and operate locally. So they've been an excellent resource partner in that regard, but it has been frustrating for them as well as those applying.
And in terms of Brace, is there a consideration to the numbers that you gave? You said that ninety percent of those funds have been allocated to businesses. Is that right? I had that note somewhere.
The Brace Grant?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was the first one we did. So we've gone through that. So that's also reimbursement-based, so they they need to provide proof of of whatever they bought to us. And so the ten percent that is remaining there, we're just waiting on the documentation to come in. And then we'll we'll push the rest out. But that one's nearly complete.
So the businesses have to spend the money and then they are being reimbursed for it?
That's correct. And we we can we can get a check in a week. And if they show us a purchase order or or anything that obligates them to whatever they're purchasing, we will use that to turn the check.
So they don't have to have the funds upfront, because that could be a challenge for her.
Yeah, they could put it on a credit card and we'll get it seven to ten days and they can be.
Okay, I think I have some more questions. Let me think about that some, but yeah.
Similarly, do you know which businesses were successful in getting grants slash loans to the program?
We've heard anecdotally about a few in the city. I don't know that there's a list. I'm sure there's really not, but some folks have told us and most, I would say they're probably small to medium-sized businesses across a couple of industries. What we have heard about the PPP, which is much better news than the IDOL, is that you know, there's more funds attributed to it, especially with the second round, and it was they're a little more accessible. But you had to have an existing relationship with an existing bank. So you could not be a new customer and sign up to do business with that bank to have access to their portion of however they allocated that through the SBA. So having an existing relationship with a bank was critical there. But even that doesn't do the trick. There there are many people that are still waiting. The new money just came in a couple of days ago. But the pipeline is is really full. And I'm not sure how the SBA has worked with their lending partners. And I'm not sure how the SBA has worked with their lending partners to try to allocate that across, you know, the country. It's behind that.
And then the final question I have, at least for the moment, is just, you said the Home to Hope has seen a twenty-five percent increase in folks going through it because the jail system is releasing more people because of COVID nineteen. Is there any sense of whether there, there any challenges connecting the new people going through the program with resources? I don't know, I'm just, I'm wondering if it's created challenges of finding the resources needed to, to meet that demand?
Yeah, it's probably a good question that I'm not prepared to answer as I'm not as close to that as some others, but I can try and find out. I would imagine the biggest challenge is that, you know, everything's being done virtually and you can't send somebody to an address to, to, to get assistance. So everybody's probably adapting to that new, new environment and having to do things either by video or on, on telephone. But I do know that the Community Hotline has some significant resources. The Community Foundation has some additional significant resources. So there are resources that are available. It's just a matter of making those connections and getting people, you know, on the right path. Well, I'll make a note to follow up and see if I can find out more.
And one question that I have in looking at brace and the resources that were put into the Business Equity Fund, since one is a grant and one is a loan, are you all tracking, you know, looking at the brace grant through an equity lens to make sure that you all are catching businesses who, based on all the reports that we're seeing and just as in like who COVID is attacking more on the health spectrum to make sure that those businesses that may already been having, you know, maybe some challenges are not falling under?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know that we put a health lens over it, but there's certainly a diverse group of businesses that applied of businesses that, that have received, received the funds, so yes.
And I said just an equity lens over the brace grant. Did you all look at it and make sure that Black and other minority businesses were considered in that process too?
Yes, we absolutely did.
Are there any other questions, Council?
I have a few, actually. While we were talking, I was trying to get on the website for, to find, to see the list of things so I could put it up on Facebook and I can't get to it. What, what is the address now?
From the city's website?
For the economic development that has all the various programs that businesses can apply for. Because I know a couple of businesses I've talked to are really struggling and looking, they might be announcing that they're closing soon.
Sure. Yeah, so if you, so the, the city's new website just launched yesterday. But if you go to that, the easiest way is just to look at the departmental dropdown and click on economic development. And that page has, that's what I refer to as our landing page. That has all the resources related to, you'll see a big kind of COVID nineteen business resource banner at the top. And that's where you'll find it. You're welcome to refer folks to us and we will connect them or send them the link directly as well.
Just when you Google it, it come, all the links that come up don't work.
All right, Sina, I'll send it.
I'll put it in the chat here in a minute. I can do that.
Okay. All right, I just sent it to you.
Oh, you sent it, okay.
All right, are there any other, did you have more questions, Sina?
I think the one that I've, the one I had about the PPP application, it sounds like there's not much that we can do to help people with that.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. If we would, we'll move on now to Social Services, Ms. Diane Cooper.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm in the second floor conference room here on City Hall. And some of this, Sina, may be stuff you heard in the email I sent last week. So you may be hearing it again. But as our offices closed to the public on March seventeenth, it took us a while to get people prepared to work from home. But by the following week, we were, we had most people working from home. At this point in time, there are a number of people that have to come into the office for certain reasons but aren't staying very long. And I would say at any given time between our four floors and City Hall Annex, we have approximately ten to twelve employees at any given time in the office. And the remainder are working at home or out in the community. So all of our programs are continuing to operate. And as to be expected, our benefit programs have seen a huge increase in applications, new applications that have come in. So I'm going to concentrate on that to begin with. And these were numbers that I had given and were reported in the daily progress too for March. So for our SNAP applications, new applications in nine, or two thousand nineteen, we had a hundred and nineteen new applications for SNAP benefits. And in this March, this past March, we had two hundred and fifty-six new applicants. So that was a hundred and fifteen percent increase since last year. And of course, most of that increase came in the last few months of March due to people losing their jobs or, or getting their hours cut. And similarly, in TANF, Temporary Assistance to Native Families, in March of last year, our new applications were eighteen. And this year, March twenty twenty, we had forty-five new TANF applications. So that was a hundred and fifty percent increase from two thousand nineteen. Now, anecdotally, at this point in time, because we don't have the state numbers yet totaled for us, but at this point in time, I would say we're going to have even a greater percentage of increase in both of those programs for the month of April. And we won't know those numbers until after the first week of May. So there's been this huge surge in new applications, which is a lot of work. However, there are some good news things that have come down from the feds and the state as far as our benefit programs. One is prior to the pandemic, SNAP benefits were based on two things. If you qualified, it was based on what your current income, household income was, what assets you had and how many people lived in your household. So a household with three people in it, they could both qualify for SNAP benefits, but the one with lower income may get more SNAP benefits than the one with a higher income. At this point in time, every single household that qualifies for SNAP benefits, including the, the people that were not new applicants, every single SNAP household is getting the maximum amount of SNAP benefits for the number of people in their household. So they may have three people in the household and because of income in the past, they were only receiving a hundred dollars of SNAP benefits. They now receive the maximum for three people in the household. And that, the maximum is based on zero income. So that's a benefit for our families at this point in time. The other additional benefit right now is we are not required to do any renewals for people. So when people qualify for benefits, they don't qualify forever. They, they have to go through a review process after six months, nine months, twelve months. So right now, no renewals are being done. Anybody who qualified for benefits, when this all started, we're not looking at renewals that came due in March or renewals that are coming due in April or renewals that will be coming through in May. Everybody is remaining on their benefits at this point in time. So that is helping us not only keep people in the community on their benefits, but it's helping us process the new applications quickly so that people that are applying now are getting their applications processed very quickly. Additionally, all of our staff are reaching out to our TANF caseload right now by phone or email or checking in with them as they can. And there is something that's called TANF Emergency Assistance. So when staff check in with our TANF clients, they are able to offer assistance if they need it with other expenditures such as rent, car insurance, utility bills that they still have, may have to pay, diapers, wipes, things like that. And that comes under TANF Emergency Assistance. So we are making sure staff are, are trying to check in with all of our TANF clients to see if they need any of that emergency assistance. So benefit programs, again, most of our workers can work at home. They have state laptops that are at home with them. They can get onto the state system. Our front desk staff, our social services assistants, they are the ones that are rotating in and out of the office because we do have our main line that anybody can call for assistance or how to get assistance. They can also call to check on where their application is in the process. And again, they're getting processed very quickly, but some people are desperate for that day. And so they can find that information out. We also have our front desk people are taking all the paper applications that come in. Now, people can apply online, they can apply to the, the federal system. But our paper applications that come in are all being scanned by our front desk people. And so our benefit workers at home then do not have to come into the office. They can process those applications right from their laptops, their desk, their state laptops that they have at home. So that's working well so far. Our family services programs, Adult Protective Services and Child Protective Services, both, the numbers of new reports are significantly down. That's to be expected with our CPS reports as we always get the largest number of CPS reports from schools and from the medical community. And the medical community is not doing a lot of regular checkups right now with folks. And our schools, of course, have been closed now for over a month. We still are getting some reports and all reports are investigated, not, they're not all investigated. They're all, they all go through the state scale of whether it's a valid report or not a valid report. Valid reports, we try to see if the reporter has any information about the health of the people they're reporting on, the family they're reporting on or the children they're reporting on so that we know what we may expect when we go out to investigate. And when we go out, we do have our staff going out with protective gear. So they have goggles, they have face masks, and they also have gloves. We try to meet with the people outside their home and not go into the home environment. We also are, have masks if need be, children-sized masks if we need to transport children at all in our vehicles. And we are doing the best we can to keep children within their homes and just as usual, if not, find kinship placements for them. But all of Child Protective Services continues to be happening. Our children that are on prevention, family, you know, foster care prevention cases, our workers are still doing monthly visits. A lot of those are happening the same way this meeting is happening. A lot of them are happening on social media, are, are happening on Zoom or other webinar-based programs. And they are approved ways and methods of meeting the monthly visitation at this point in time. The same thing is happening with children in foster care placements. And as always, if we have removed any children in the past month and a half, we do our best to find a kinship placement for those children. The Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court is still open and most of our cases, not all, but most are heard on Wednesdays. And social workers still need to be in court. We are still processing adoptions. In fact, I, I signed two adoptions last week, kinship placement adoptions for children. Our workers are mainly able to work at home. Of course, they do have to come into the office, especially if they have court coming up. They've got to get documents ready. They have to come into the office to do renewals on adoption funding, which I have to sign off on. They have to be notarized. But most of our family services specialists, if they come into the office, they don't need to be in the office for more than a few hours during the week. And they always check because, again, I have to sign off on everything for those family services, court documents and, and other agreement documents. Our adult service team has assigned certain workers to different neighborhoods in the city. So an example is we have an adult worker assigned specifically to Crescent Halls. And he is currently working with Martha Jefferson to get COVID testing for every person living in Crescent Halls. And he's doing work and trying to get residents to understand the need for this and agree to it. And then we have, our other adult service workers are assigned to other neighborhoods in the city. We've also been checking with, not just, not just for adult services, but we have social workers checking in with the property managers of public housing and seeing, you know, what needs are out there, how, how we can assist with anything for them. We also have two of our, our workers, one from benefits, a benefit supervisor, benefit program supervisor, and a family services specialist senior are both working with the West Haven Nurses Clinic in coordinating some outreach to the West Haven neighborhood also. And then we have a few staff members who are also answering calls from the Resource Center, the Community Resource Hotline at the Emergency Operations Center. And my assistant director is also at the Emergency Operations Center. And that is what she's doing full-time also at the Emergency Operations Center, working with Human Services Division of, of the operations or the Emergency Operations Center. So people are really, really busy. They are doing a good job of only coming into the office when they need to be in the office, social distancing, washing their hands, trying to be as safe as possible when they are in the office space. And I just want to say that, you know, many of them, as we've already mentioned, they're juggling their own family responsibilities. They're weighing their health risks and they're continuing to understand the needs in our community if anything, just increased during this pandemic. And we are, you know, I just, I can't say enough about what a great job they're all doing. At this point in time, we're also, I'm coordinating with Melissa in the voter registers office as we are getting ready for absentee voting to begin in the next few weeks and trying to, to make sure that we limit the amount of space that the voters can keep their distance in and keep, and get into voter registrar in order to do absentee validating, but keep our, the rest of our office space and City Hall Annex blocked off. So, so we're coordinating on that and, and that should be coming to fruition very well. So um so we're coordinating on that and um and that should be coming to fruition very well. You have questions for me on any of this information?
Well, first, thank you. And um, you know, your staff are all that they're doing. I made the statement um earlier and I really, you know, want to make sure that every department understands that we know that there are some employees who are having to um, you know, work in this space very differently than um others. And while we haven't been able to figure out a way to um acknowledge that, um to date, that is a conversation that um I've brought up during every budget meeting and that other counselors, I'm not on the two-two ones with them. Um, so I won't, you know, I won't say for certain, but I know that the conversations I'm, I've had with them and what was expressed at the budget meetings, that those um conversations are happening amongst them too. And so I just would like to uh make sure that um you know that and that you um and that your staff understands that we understand that some of them are having to um, you know, risk their safety in the way, ways that others are not. I do have a question around the front desk um staff. Are they, are there more than one staff member at uh time? And um did you all consider and Dr. Richardson, if that's even a possibility of transferring um phone lines to um those individuals? So that if there are more than one at there, you know, at a time, I know how that structure is set up. Just want to make sure that they are safe as possible.
In the front desk area itself, um there is only one person there. There are other people that are opening mail in a separate uh separate place and and distributing mail and faxing applications, or I should say scanning applications into the state system. So they're not all in the same space. I know it, they're not all in our front desk space, but they're all considered on our front desk team. So they could cover any of those duties, but they're not all in one space. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for checking on that and being concerned about it.
Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to check, is there still a way for people to to get help in filling out an application?
They can get help filling out an application by calling our front desk. And we also, I want to say um EBT cards are how SNAP benefits are, an electronic benefit transfer card like a credit card. That's how people get um their benefits um for SNAP benefits. And those cards, um we can mail them to people or they can schedule a time to come pick up and we will deliver it to their vehicle. But they can, they can call for assistance on filling out an application.
And in terms of, is are you experiencing any? Or do you feel like the system that you all have in places um that all of your staff needs are being met to meet the citizens' needs?
You know, it's, it's, that's a hard thing to judge. People that are out in the community are um concerned. You know, concerned they may carry something back to their own families. But they know they're supposed to be meeting with people with protective gear, um PPEs and and you know, it, it's anxious for a lot of people. And certainly for our staff that are going out and having to meet uh with families or adults. And trying to make sure that we steer them to mental health uh assistance as needed. So.
And I, I received some calls early on about um the um protective equipment when before we kind of got that together. So we're um very grateful that that system was put in place. So I appreciate all of that effort and they are feeling safer, even though that's not, you know, a hundred percent guaranteed anywhere. Feeling better about that process.
And the only comment and question, I mean, we've been answered, but just my thoughts are really on, you know, PPE is one thing because you can see it, but just the mental impact this has and making sure that we're all supporting each other. And as one of the other, you know, department head said earlier, just how are we making sure that people are getting the right balance in their own lives? Because they're not going to be effective to this community if they don't have that kind of rejuvenation time. And um it's certainly especially of interest in this department where it's, from my point of view, it's challenging work every day. And obviously, this is now just even heightening that.
Right. Well, and one other thing we have done is we used to, I mean, used to. In normal times, we have one uh social worker who is on call during the week. And so they're on call for a seven day period, twenty-four hours. Well, not twenty-four, not the, the hours were open in the office regularly. But we are no longer have one social worker doing that for a full week. Um, they are doing it for a day or two and then it transfers to another social worker that week so that they don't have to worry about having to do a full seven day period of going out for emergency calls. So hopefully that is keeping, um, you know, helping a little bit with um their ability to recoup before they have another assignment to do, to do a day or two.
And a question that's come through um from someone who was participating is that once things open up again and anticipating an increase in CPS reporting from pediatrics, medical folks and schools, do you anticipate being able to handle the volume that potentially will hit you? That's coming from our participant.
Um, that, we are looking, trying to figure out how we are going to handle that because it is going to be difficult. Um, and we are assuming an influx once um we have, once schools are back and hopefully that will be in August, um, once schools are back in session. Um, and uh once children are being seen by others in the community more than they are now. Um, yes, uh, we are concerned about that. Um, we will be working on trying to develop a plan for that. And and likewise, um, right now, um, it's the same with APS reports are down, although we never get as many APS, of course, as children's reports. But um we could see the same thing in APS.
And I think it's critical to um make sure, and I expressed this to Dr. Richardson when one of his updates came out, you know, through the email about the departments, that we're doing everything we can to um, you know, help families um with stability at this time and that we're always thinking about that from a, you know, a community standpoint, like what those messages be, so that there isn't this timeframe where we are fearful that kids are, you know, being abused and that no one, you know, knows. But that we are helping decrease the amount of stress in um family, in their lives so that mental and physical and um spiritual, emotional well-being are um considered in everything we do as a city because that will prevent, um, you know, for some people, we can't eliminate and we know as long as we've been doing this work that there hasn't been elimination of those issues. But it definitely can help, um, you know, families um make it through. And that is one thing that I expressed to Dr. Richardson that I hope we were considering, what messaging and um campaigns could we put out to the community to help families um during this time and not just wait in anticipation for um those numbers um to increase with the full understanding that there are some things that we just will not be able to.
Right, right. And I, I know um some social workers are putting out um to the, both their prevention cases and and um other, other families that they've had contact with, putting out some of the good online. Now, not everybody has access to online things, but putting out, you know, activities that, you know, they've seen online and ways to help your children, you know, deal with. Because children are going through stress too over the COVID-19 stuff, um not just the adults and the families. And um, you know, trying to keep, again, it has to do with not just their physical health, but their mental health. And I know that our prevention cases, our our social workers are working really, really diligently trying to to assist those families. And hopefully, some of the financial assistance that is not just our benefit programs, but the other ways we have for financial assistance with many of these families um is taking a little bit of the stress off um at this time. But we are trying to keep with the families, you know, we don't go out searching for families or children that um we, we need to receive reports. But um we are trying to, with the families we're serving at this point in time, really trying to keep on top of of what struggles they may, additional struggles they may be having right now and trying to assist in whatever way we can.
And just one final point for me, and I know we have to um move on. But I, um, to piggyback off of um Heather's comments, I think we need to just make sure that um all of the directors um and, you know, understand that no matter what department you're in, this is a really challenging time for almost everybody. And whatever that um, you know, those needs that staff members have to be able to um get up the next day or if it takes the two day, whatever that, you know, z- zone looks like, that they need some space from their regular um, you know, routine. I hope that we are having those discussions and, you know, attempting to figure out how to, you know, make sure that we are taking care of the staff and acknowledging that they have families and that um, you know, they are trying to make sure that their families are safe and secure and continue um the work and that we understand that balance.
Yes, I totally agree with you.
And I just, um, someone just put a question in the chat. Um, Joy Johnson asked, for people whose hours are reduced, are they eligible for SNAP?
Um, depending upon their income, they should apply. Apply if their hours are reduced, apply for SNAP benefits. Um, and unless they apply, we can't, we don't know what their income is. So I can't, and I don't know what their household number is, but it never hurts to apply, um, to see if you qualify.
Okay, are there any other questions? Well, thank you and we appreciate you and your team and um and all that you are doing. And um, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
And next up, we do have Mr. Garland Williams from uh CAT. I know many questions were asked pertaining to the services uh that are being provided by CAT throughout um this crisis. So uh, Mr. Garland, uh, Williams, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm here. So thank you, uh, Dr. Richardson. Uh, so I'm going to give you a kind of a timeline of how CAT has prepared for and activities surrounding COVID-19. So we started our activities in providing some, a small level of PPE to our drivers on May 9th. That was three days before the council authorized the emergency, uh, uh, state of emergency for Charlottesville. So we started giving gloves, um, and anti-bacterial wipes, um, to allow them to clean high-touch areas. Um, the day that the emergency was issued, the 12-week switch our cleaning products, we bought a new product called AirX, which is a hospital-grade cleaning product that allowed us to um not only clean but disinfect um high-touch areas and also was, uh, allows us to actually spray it on um our seats, uh, which are cloth. Um, it dries overnight and disinfects and and kills all bacterias. Uh, on Friday, um, March 13th, um, we also uh stepped up our midday cleaning efforts. So our cleaning staff, which is only four, we changed their, their schedule so that uh reached the bus at uh sometime mid, midday between the hours of noon and two uh to do a walkthrough and uh wipe down of all the uh high-touch areas, the posts, the rails, the tops of the seat, the seats if they have enough time with us. The buses in there are for a long enough time. Um, so we added another level of cleaning. Uh, Wednesday, March the 18th, um, we asked the city manager to allow us to go fare free. So he, part of his powers, he authorized us to go fare for a couple of things for us. We stopped uh collecting money um and touching passes, which is a potential activity for trans um bacterias and and the COVID virus. So going fare free, allowing folks to enter from the rear. That also prevented, uh, allowed us to do the extension of six feet, uh, six feet of distance from our drivers. So they were really concerned about um having that activity so close to the public. We also uh hired a professional cleaning um company that came in uh as a uh um on the weekends to do professional deep cleaning of all the areas. That was a big thing that we really needed to do. It also allowed us to, to, I think, provide a level of service to the community that it reassures them that we are doing everything we can to keep them safe, um, our drivers safe and keep our buses as clean as possible. We taped off the front of the um the bus also. Um, that doesn't, uh, that will prevent uh kind of that the exposure from the driver uh to the public. Uh, we also implemented a voluntary face mask um uh protocol at that point in time um because at that, at that time, um, CDC was still recommending that, you know, you didn't necessarily need face masks. Um, and we uh were actively trying to get uh face, uh surgical face masks and then um the uh uh N95 face masks. So we were, we're working through that model. On the 18th also, we limited the uh hours of our downtown station, our downtown transit station. Um, we reduced the hours from uh to eight AM to five PM. Uh, and on the weekends, since we weren't collecting any uh fares, there was no need for anyone to go in to buy uh fare passes. So this was a way for us to limit the exposure um in the building uh here to the the ten uh person rule. Uh, on the, the next day, the 19th, we started looking at and having discussions with the state about our high-risk list, compiled uh what, what we consider our employee high-risk list, got those individuals uh put on administrative leave as soon as we possibly can in, based on recommendations from the CDC, the FDA and um the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. So we were trying to keep those individuals safe and um and still actually continue to pay them. There was funding that was provided to us by uh Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation initially. Um, that was about $221,000 that allowed us to do that. Uh, we've subsequently gotten additional money from uh the feds in the hour in their response of what's called the CARES Act. Um, that's a significant amount of funding for uh this region. Collectively, it's over $7 million, but specifically to CAT, it's uh exactly $5.5 million. So we're working through that model um to, and we're working on it and to oxy, have that, that money spent um with quit-related activities. On Saturday, the 21st of March, um, we introduced, um, the new service hours. Um, we, we basically uh cut off all of our Sunday service. Um, that was dedicated to, for, dedicated for cleaning of all of our chemicals, um, uh, keeping the, the, the uh professional cleaners that we brought on board, uh, getting them to deeply all of our vehicles. That was a necessary uh component for us. Um, we also uh reduced our hours from till six AM to nine PM. We basically cut off three hours, ten, eleven, and twelve. Considering that there is a, uh, we started seeing our, our ridership drop off and basically after nine o'clock, it was almost non-existent. The governor on March 30th issued a stay-at-home order. Um, and also at that same day, the Department of Rail and Transportation issued what's called Transit Guidance and they suggested some of the idea, the items that CAT had, or like uh front uh, eliminate front loading, um, only use rear loading, go fare free if you could, rope off the front. Um, have you, uh, have your driver face mask, all those sorts of things are in that. And actually, I forwarded that document, I believe, to all members of city council so they could see uh what the guidance was um from. so they could see what the guidance was from VDRPT. On Tuesday, March 31st, CAT made it mandatory that all of our drivers wear face masks. When we started issuing them face masks and, and actually made sure that they have two sets of gloves as opposed to one a day, still using the wipes. But also now we've actually stepped up and actually they can have two face masks supplied by, by CAT. April the 3rd, we took the lead based on what the guidance was from the transit, from VDRPT on, on transit guidance and limited our numbers to 10, 10 passengers on a vehicle. That's in compliance with what the governor suggested, no groups bigger than 10. We also took some additional measures to have overcrowding on some of the issues. We, we can also address those. We've actually, some behind the scenes planning to do that also. April the 7th, which was Saturday, we changed our service model to what's considered a frontline service. We basically reduced, we made sure every single one of our bus lines continued but run on 60-minute service. There are others that we noted, the four during the AM because it connected to medical facilities, the two, five to seven, and the free trolley, which already had greater than 60-minute service would continue to do so because they also connected with medical facilities and hospitals. That is also working on PSAs. We've actually worked on the first one where we thank our drivers and all of the essential worker and first responders. We're working on a second one to ask the public to wear face masks on our vehicles. Saying, we are, we're using face masks to protect you. And if you'll use a face mask to protect us, we'll get through this thing together. So that's the second PSA that we're working on. We have an internal communication document that we also share with, that basically is done every two weeks to make sure all of our operators and staff are up to speed on what's going on here. One of the things I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that we've seen in the newspaper that our ridership has declined. It was supposed to. One of the, the things that the stay-at-home order was supposed to do is, supposed to stay at home unless you're taking essential trips. So we have seen what we regard as about a 57.7% reduction in our ridership. That was anticipated. So the third quarter of this year versus the third quarter of last year, we're down approximately 178,000 riders, but that was once again anticipated based on what's going on with the pandemic. So those are the highlights. I will, I know it's for time. Are there any other questions I can answer those?
And thank you for highlighting that at the end, but I'm grateful that there's a decline in ridership. And as long as we can keep your employees and the community safe, that's the goal. And so I hope that, you know, that's the, you know, common goal and that no one viewed that as a negative. Are you in any challenges and are your employees doing? Especially since they are some of the frontline workers that I've been talking about in my comments too.
Yeah, I would say morale is good. One of the things that I was able to do as a part of the final lifeline reduction in service model was reduce their schedules to no one's eight and a half hours. Also reduced the number of days that they work to try to make sure that we take care of not just the physical, but the mental side of this. A lot of them are extremely stressed, as you can imagine, concerned about, you know, how, how many individuals they, they come in contact with on a daily basis. So we are really monitoring that and making sure that we're providing as much support in services as we possibly can for those individuals. I like to say that, you know, we were, we're essential. We're, many of us, you know, in this, I've never seen a market where transit has become such a vital component in an emergency situation like this. Out there, from the moment that they leave our base, they're coming into contact with, you know, potentially hundreds of folks every single day. So we're, we're doing everything we can to probably, to keep them safe and, and keep them healthy.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean likewise, I just wanted to thank everyone on the team as well as I shared the, the PSA video on social media. I thought that was really well done. And I think not just for bus drivers, but all essential city employees. I hope we can at least discuss thanking them, not just in words, but with hazard pay, the ability to collectively bargain and unionize. I know those might be longer-term discussions. It's easier said than done. But I think across our economy, that's what, you know, thanking them has to look like. One question. What kind of hit has the decline in ridership and the new processes that are needed? How has that impacted the revenue picture for CAT? And do you anticipate that the money from the CARES Act in the state is enough to meet that gap? Or is there going to be some kind of unmet need there?
There will be no unmet need. So one of the things that we are very fortunate and that Congress did in supplying funding at this crucial point is, in the CARES Act, we can use the money for personnel. We use money for capital. I can use money to put people on administrative leave. I can use the money for any revenue gaps. So shortfalls in revenue that are anticipated because we're running fare-free are covered by the CARES Act money. So we will be whole, we will, we do not have to worry about potentially laying off anybody or reducing anyone's hours. The hazard pay, you talked about earlier, we're not able to technically give them hazard pay. That would be unfair to the rest of the, the city's employees. What we have done is been able to reduce their hours, but still continue to pay them for their full salary. So they're almost receiving, in essence, in hazard, a hazard pay in, in that manner.
Okay.
A question came up. A question came up on asking if there are any challenges or issues surrounding the limit of 10 riders per bus?
So there are, of course, challenges, but what we have there, and we, we have tried not to advertise this, but it's come up and we've gotten questions about that, not just from city council, but from others. We actually staged a couple of buses around every single morning, every single afternoon with extra board operators. We call them EB's or relief drivers. In case the driver gets to a stop and he has more than 10 individuals who want to use the bus, we actually are positioned it so we can get another bus in to service to take care of those individuals. Like I said, we were trying not to advertise that because that would encourage folks to ride it. And we're only, we're really trying to preserve the service for essential services, essential service workers if we can. Because remember, the stay-at-home order is still in effect and we want to make sure that we continue to keep those numbers down.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
I just want to applaud Mr. Williams for taking on a lot of the necessary precautions before it was even mandated.
So again, thank you. I think this is the point where the next group is supposed to come in. And I'm not sure if you all are staying on or if they've been on. But we appreciate everyone's time. Thanks for the information. I know the community appreciates having the information also. I definitely appreciate the information that you just gave us, Mr. Williams, and hope that we are able to explore that a little bit more on Friday during the budget meetings because that's one of the discussions that is important for us to have about the whole organization, about what, what, what's our safety net? What would trigger, you know, furloughs and layoffs? And I know that UVA Medical Center announcing furloughs today, that there are a lot of people who are, you know, concerned about that. And that is information that, you know, we would want to give as many people as possible about what their safety net is so that their families will not have, you know, those concerns. So it's good to hear that at least one department for now, you know, would be okay. And I'm interested, Dr. Richardson, in how that fits into the overall equation for the organization? And how does that help increase safety nets in, you know, other departments? I appreciate the model of you taking care of the employees as we've heard from all the, you know, directors and look forward to giving, you know, them that information. So I know they know individually what their department leaders are doing, but making sure that we're getting that message out across, you know, the city.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of city council, we need to take a short break. So the folks who are the panelists now, they can log off and we can have the next group log on.
Well, I just have a question in case that they are for you. So the, the, like, the information that was presented by Garland at the end of the, that's the type of information that we will receive from them on Friday?
That will be some of the information, but I wanted to talk to you a little bit more about that as we were going to discuss earlier. About our two, two ones for Friday. So during this break, could you give me a call?
Okay. All right, so we'll take a 15-minute break. And so that would be 5:40 and we'll continue at that time.
And people can remain on the webinar and we'll be back shortly.
Seeing all your faces. The homeless population falls into, sort of, ticks all the boxes for the most vulnerable that we have. Right now, Dr. Richardson gave us permission to use Key Rec Center as a temporary shelter for Pacha men, which is a really tremendous assistance. Really, the churches began to feel in early March really uneasy about doing the hosting. And so this really eased the burden pretty considerably. We really appreciate council easing the special use permit for the Haven to allow women to sleep in the sanctuary. And so for the first month or so, we had men at Key Rec and women at the sanctuary. We also, through the Thomas Jeffersonary Coalition for the Homeless, purchased a block of rooms at the Stay Bridge as an opportunity for a quarantine or isolation site for anyone who tested positive or was symptomatic. We had five folks who spent some time in those rooms, though none of them actually ended up testing positive, thankfully. Recently, the Emergency Operations Center agreed that it was best to move as many people out of those congregate sleeping settings as possible. And so another block of rooms was purchased at La Quinta. And now we have seventeen men who were identified as particularly high risk, who are now sleeping at La Quinta and seven women who are sleeping at La Quinta. So there's no longer women sleeping at the Haven and we only have sixteen men at Key Rec, which really allows for much more sort of free flow and allowing people to keep the kind of recommended social distancing we have in play. There are forty-five people at the Salvation Army and the Salvation Army has sufficient services to be able to offer both high-risk isolation sites and quarantine sites within the property, though thankfully they've not had to use any of those spots. There are about ten people staying with shelter for help in emergency and they also have the opportunity to have some tiered settings for folks there and to have people as separated as possible, so each with their own room and access to a bathroom that's pretty dedicated. We continue to sort of try to anticipate how long we'll need to have these sort of three-tiered systems of housing for people who are experiencing homelessness. And we're taking it sort of thirty days at a time. As you all know, we don't know how long we'll be in this particular contraction sort of phase and what it means for the homeless, who would be the last sort of group to have eased the social distancing expectations. We're in a conversation today with Region Ten, who has graciously offered the use of the Women's Center, the Women's Treatment Center, as a possible quarantine site so that we can move the folks or stop contracting with the Stay Bridge, which is quite a distance away from the city, and be closer into town in a more comfortable setting, should we need that. Pleased that the COVID clinic has agreed to provide rapid access testing for folks in the homeless system of care, should they become symptomatic. And UVA's social work has been a pleasure to work with in terms of facilitating that potential access point and also exit point if someone leaves the hospital and needs a place to stay with us. So we are continuing to reach out to anybody who we think is particularly vulnerable and try to make sure that we can serve their needs. I can't say enough good stuff about the resilience and smarty pants and creative human services staff. I'm happy to answer questions.
Well, I'll just say thank you. I'll probably work more closely with you during this time than anyone. So I, most of my questions are answered. And I know the, you know, work that you and your team are doing and I hope that they know, as we told the other, you know, directors, that we appreciate all the efforts that you all are putting into helping to stabilize the community at this time. And I'm glad to hear, as I would expect, the commitment to the, you know, self and employer employee care of the people who, you know, work with you. So I appreciate hearing, hearing that. And in terms of the, I'm glad most of the staff are able to telework, but also the same thing that, you know, I've said to every director, just letting your staff know that we understand that there are people who are having to risk their safety in ways that others are not. And it's something that we hope to find a solution to.
Thank you.
I have a question about, is there sort of a timeline for individuals who are staying at the hotels? Is there, is there sort of a timeline of how that's being funded, where that could run out and additional funding might be necessary to sustain that? And then in addition, And then in addition, is there sort of even a rough timeline for how long the ability to use Key Rec is possible or planned for? Is that until like the June stay-at-home order ends? Or is that sort of done on a month-by-month or week-by-week basis?
I'll tackle the Key Rec piece first. We initially, like everybody sort of tackled this in a two-week chunk, thinking, we're not sure how long this is going to last, how long are we going to have to do this? And so we did tackle that in a smaller chunk initially. Now we are planning through, particularly now that the election has been postponed, that will, that Key Rec will be available to those folks' stay-at-home order and then we'll reassess. At that point, we may have actually identified alternative resources in other places and successfully sort of transitioned most folks out of there by then anyway. That is our hope, where people will be safest when they're in their own room with their own access to a bathroom. And so we'll continue to see that as a standard. And we are tackling this at 30, sort of 30-day chunks. The first chunk, we had some emergency funding through the Department of Housing and Community Development and actually a private donor supported T-Jack as well for that first purchase. The Emergency Operations Center agreed for the second purchase of rooms for La Quinta to use emergency of the ECC funds to pay for that for that month, for the whatever we end up with potentially working with Region 10. It may be that the city, through our contract with both Region 10 and T-Jack, sort of upfronts those expenses. At this point, like many other departments, we anticipate that there's money coming from both dedicated FEMA funds coming through the Department of Housing and Community Development that are reimbursed, they're based on a reimbursement basis, but also additional dollars to come through HUD as well that will be dedicated towards resolving the housing needs, emergency housing needs of people experiencing homelessness. And on a call on Friday, we heard that there's actually potentially substantial funds to actually address permanent supportive housing needs for people who are experiencing homelessness right now, too. That's a really exciting opportunity. I think the idea that people would be transitioned to a hotel and then at some point, when we feel more comfortable in the community with our sort of health conditions, that they be released to the space doesn't quite feel right appropriately. And so I think that the idea of additional dollars that would help support that transition actually into private housing would be fantastic. But at this point, we, we are, there's multiple streams of funds that are coming in multiple ways, most of which are reimbursement, some of which are not, but none of which are actually on the ground yet. And so it's possible that the city upfronts that through our existing contracts and then gets reimbursed through the Department of Housing and Community Development. But on Friday, we heard pretty clearly that there's going to be money for this. So I feel good about our chances around that.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Another question, just both for the, like, sort of emergency fund that the city operates plus the Charlottesville Community Foundation Fund. Is there any sense about how much of that money remains and sort of how much need there has already been versus? Yeah, if there's money remaining and there's, it's already been tapped out because the need is so large.
The Pathways Fund is nearly tapped out. The last time we looked at the set of data, we have not gotten a data report from the Community Foundation in a little bit more than a week. And so we're assuming that we're pretty close to the edge of our pathways, our emergency funding from the city. The county is also very close to the end of their, their investment. The Community Foundation, that the last time we looked at data, there had been just a little bit more than 3,000 calls and 1,700 applications and they had released already 1.4 million dollars. And so there also was an announcement in the last 10 days of two separate $1 million contributions to that fund. And so it continues. So I don't think that they're necessarily at the end of their pool. But there's also a tremendous number of applications that are sort of already in line in the hopper. The volume has just overwhelmed almost every system that's been set up, including a new online application, which should ease the access both for folks who are applying online and for folks who are calling on the phone. This is really unprecedented in terms of setting up a system to accommodate this kind of, both the intensity and acuity of the need, but also the volume of the need.
I just had a quick question about staying at Key Rec. Are people allowed to stay there during the day?
No, so because the Haven is open, they're, they're moving. So they move as a group, get up in the morning and go to the Haven and spend the day there. There's more showers there, there's more services there, it's better. And I think it's frankly, it's a tension easter to be able to have a locational change twice a day, rather than for many of us who have been home for a long time, we relish the opportunity to go someplace else for eight or 10 hours. And I do think that as long as there's a safe place for them to be, that they're not being sort of cut loose into the street to find their own wherewithal for 12 to 14 hours. But we're actually saying, please go to the Haven and there's a little march down to the Haven. And so like only a couple blocks, I feel comfortable with that arrangement. If it was further away, I'm not so sure, but so close.
Also, what are we doing as far as physical distancing with the soup kitchens?
So there have been, inside all of these spaces and sometimes in the immediate outside, there's been a lot of guidance. There's been a lot of giving away of masks and there's hand washing stations now multiple places on the outside of the Haven and lots of hand sanitizer on the inside. They're wiping down every surface almost every two hours in that space. And so they're really paying very close attention to trying to have this be as mitigated as possible. But once folks are sort of outside gathering around, it's harder and harder to maintain that. And so there's guidance and advice given, some fiddling. And then around the outside of Key Rec, there's been some paint that's been put down and there's more monitoring during the intake to make sure that there's no sort of clustering. But it's pretty hard. And I hear a couple times a week from somebody who's concerned after seeing a group of folks that are making a choice for themselves. It's not for lack of information, it's also not for lack of resource in that context. It's just people making a choice. And that can be hard for all of us to see and reconcile with.
Also, I mean, I know Pacha must be overseeing the nighttime at Key Rec. And I know Pacha's used to closing down already almost a month ago now. Is, are we looking to assist them any? Is this within their budget? How long can they maintain this?
I'm certain that Jason would want me to say, no, it's not within their budget. All of these folks who have unexpected, you know, expenses and costs associated with managing this particularly vulnerable population. I do believe that the money that's coming through, we have emergency shelter money that's coming through the Department of Housing and Community Develop, but will also support the expanded service costs for Pacha. So we're really looking at trying to make sure everybody is as whole as possible going forward.
And that would help me get that, you know, have that information also when we're, you know, considering budget and just for the conversation we're, you know, having in the, you know, in the community. I know the conversation that I had with UVA about the furloughs today, that they are going to add additional funds to their emergency fund, too, to, you know, help, you know, provide some funding for their employees. But we know that, you know, in times like this, just every system is hit. And it just would be helpful upfront for us to know what system would need support and that we need to factor those, you know, conversations, you know, into our equation. And then what departments are pretty stable and we, you know, may not have to consider the same way.
Like all of you, we're scrambling to keep track of all of the sort of new sources or the eligibility for the sources that come out. But we'll try, do our best to try to gather that stuff. It may not all be available for our conversation on Friday, but hopefully, certainly by mid-May, we'll be able to share information about the kinds of federal and state resources that are coming to support most of our departmental functions, to be able to share what's, where the gaps are at the very least or whether the money is, is promised but not likely to land locally, which is the other thing that sometimes happens. But we can certainly do that kind of investigation before our next big budget conversation, though not Friday.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm set, thank you though, very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, we appreciate you and the work that your team is doing.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kaki. Moving on, we do have Lauren here answering your questions and then to talk a little bit more about the utility and some of the things that we've been able to do with the utility and also to helping our customers as we move through this crisis. Lauren?
You're muted.
Lauren, you need to unmute your mic.
Thank you, Brian, sorry about that. Mayor and councilors, I'm happy to talk to you about our essential operations that we continue to provide to our customers regarding utilities, especially during this stay-at-home order. A little bit about the water system and what we're still providing. It's regulated by the Virginia Department of Health. We're continuing to install water meters and encoder transmitters that we are able to then read and make sure that the meters are functioning properly. We're also responding to water meter and ERT failure responses. We are continuing to support the local construction activities that are ongoing in our community by providing water taps and water valve operations for construction projects. We also respond to water quality inquiries and the necessary required investigation and mitigation that's necessary. We also are providing fire flow test information that's requested for development. We are continuing to read meters. We are continuing to respond to customer requests through move-in and move-outs based on their facilities. We are continuing to have management oversight of our water pump station to make sure that people in the Dairy Road, Rugby Road area maintain their water. We also respond to emergency response to water leaks during the day and after hours. Regarding the, moving on to wastewater, which is regulated by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, we are responding to sewer main blockage responses and providing repairs as needed. We also respond to right-of-way sinkhole investigations that are associated with our sewer lines. And we are investigating sewer overflows that may happen, providing the necessary mitigation and mandatory reporting to the regulatory agencies. And we have after-hours emergency response related to our wastewater services as well. Regarding essential operations associated with gas, we are still continuing to respond to inside gas leaks. We get surprisingly quite a number of these call-ins where people smell gas inside their homes. We estimate we have about a call and a half a day that we respond to. We also are responding to outside gas leaks, carbon monoxide leak response investigation. Again, customer move-in and move-outs. And I might go over a little more detail about our move-in and move-out response because this is where we've got gas service technicians that actually have to go in homes to light the necessary gas appliances. We don't rely on customers to do this. So early on, we set up protocol to make sure these people ask the right questions. And this was in, in, but being advised by the American Public Gas Association, which provided us a lot of detail on what we needed to do pretty early on. And we find out whether anybody's COVID positive in the, in the household, whether symptomatic. We try to maintain, you know, the people are polite and try to explain that we want to maintain social distancing and they may want to be in another room while we go in and service their appliances. But we really had some concern about people continuing to go in people's houses and interact with customers. So we've tried to have some, some means to make sure those, those employees still remain safe. We also continue to respond to gas meter regulator responses. And we provide leak survey detection based on gas leaks. We've continued that program. This is where we go around residential areas every three years and businesses once a year and again, and they grade leaks. And if a grade one is leaked, is detected, then it needs an immediate repair by a gas service crew. We also continue to do cathodic protection readings. This is readings to make sure that our steel gas mains are in the proper order. We have system overpressurization protection we continue to provide. We also are providing new construction installations for service lines in Alamo County and within the city limits for new services and business startups. We also have, as related to misutility, and we have not seen the construction community have slowed down with any of the, you can tell based on the 911 responses, not 911, 811 responses to misutility calls. We've noticed that those calls have remained pretty steady with our locating ability. And if someone is working directly in close proximity to our gas steel mains, it's called a code set response, where we have to have someone on-site all the time to inspect that work while they're working in close proximity to our critical utility facilities. We continue to also do meter reading for gas. We have odorant readings that we take at the outer reaches to make sure that we've got the proper odorant. So, you know, when Flicker tells you, what's the rotten egg smell? We make sure those odorant readings are still maintained within that system. We have not slowed down as far as rerouting gas lines associated with construction. We just finished up a request two weeks ago from UVA. We recently received, finished up a request from BDOT on Dominion Drive, where we had to relocate gas lines associated with construction that they had going on. And we've got some other construction reroutes pending based on private development. We also have responded to third-party excavation damages to our facilities. And we respond to difficult-to-locate lines in order to make sure that our lines are located properly associated with construction. As far as the administration personnel that support the ongoing essential services out in the field, we have a 24/7 call center that takes in calls based on water leaks, gas leaks, anything people are concerned about. They can call 970-3800 and get someone immediately and we will respond. Administration, and that's maintained by five dispatchers that have rotating shifts. We also have budget review and consumption management that we've maintained, personnel management. We run a citywide drug testing program per federal guidelines to support our operations. We have asset management oversight, public awareness, community outreach continues, regulatory compliance management continues, site plan reviews, capital improvement program management oversight is also continued because our contractors continue to work to improve our facilities. We have safety program management and oversight as well. And we also are updating our system GIS mapping per compliance requirements. We have certain compliance requirements that require that new facilities are put in. We are required to update our mapping within 14 days of that installation. And we also are providing construction inspection for our capital improvement program as well as the oversight for local development construction. We currently have 21 professional administration staff working, six of which are teleworking full-time at home offices. And it's seamless, you know, they have their phone numbers, you know, sent to their cell phones and people don't know they're necessarily working from home. We also have six employees teleworking that come into the office as necessary to gather papers or do inspections out in the field. to, uh, gather papers or do inspections out in the field, um, and do what's needed to support the essential operations. And we also have nine employees in this group that were working from the office. This includes the five rotating dispatchers. Uh, we have, um, and then we have four other employees that are supporting, mostly in management roles, supporting the staff. Um, back on March 23rd, we just made a decision to, in order to minimize the social interaction among our operations staff, we split the gas operations staff in half and the water wastewater group in half. And we have them working one week on and one week off. And that was to make sure that we didn't have everybody in the lunchroom at the same time, everybody at roll call at the same time. Um, and also to make sure that we keep our employees safe. And this is not unheard of. If you look at what the, the country's doing from utility perspective, they are also, um, it's very common that they are rotating their staffs, uh, in order to ma- maximize the essential services they continue to provide. Just some additional changes we've done, made, um, in order to continue to do our business. Those people is, they, that are one week on or one week off, if they're off that week, they recognize that they could be called in for utility emergencies or extra duties if needed. Um, I'll give you an example today. We almost called people back in because we had, we were simultaneously working a water leak and we then had two sewer backups we were working, all at the same time this morning. So, it all hit at one time and we thought, contemplated calling people back in as we knew them. Uh, but we were able to figure out what we needed to do with the people we had on staff. Um, we've also staggered lunchroom hours, um, and we've staggered, we've utilizing additional workspaces to minimize pe- uh, the number of people in one workspace for roll call. We've tried to minimize our PPE usage for, uh, daily operations by thinking outside the box, by buying rubber gloves, by buying things that can be washed, that they can reuse, um, in order to make sure that our ci- city PPE usage doesn't get, um, doesn't go down quickly. Uh, we're doing regular cleaning of workspaces and vehicles. We've minimized the number of staff and vehicles in any one time because it wouldn't be unheard of during normal operations. We'd have four people in a crew cab because those extended crew cabs, because, because we're trying to minimize the vehicles out on site. But now, we're not doing that. We also are continuing construction meetings and design engineering meetings via teleconference. We have, um, weekly staff check-in meetings via teleconference. We have postponed some of our programs, um, and I mentioned earlier the gas service technicians that have to go in houses. So, we're trying to minimize what wasn't necessary to keep, to keep gas service technicians out of houses. And we have our gas meter, I'll give you an example, our gas meter replacement program, where we replace meters every 20 years. Every residential meter is replaced every 20 years, and that program, we ceased because we figured we can postpone that program, um, and not have, um, people interacting with people inside their houses. We also have established questions for people to ask when they interact with customers out in the field, um, to main, just to make sure that we keep our employees safe. I mentioned that, um, we have gotten input from the American Public Gas Association associated with how we're operating. There are roundtable discussions that are, happen bi-weekly, uh, with agencies all across this country, and they're public agencies. So, they're just like us, and the input is, is very, uh, important to us. And we recognize that we're not, our reaction to things is not any different than what anybody else is doing across this country. Um, I also have regular update meetings with Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority and Almar County Service Authority. Um, and just to see what, what's happening as far as what they're doing in reaction to, um, the COVID-19 situation. We also, with Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority and Almar County Service Authority, that we also had discussions very early on on what we were gonna do as far as our, um, budgets moving forward in our rate setting because we realized pretty quickly, um, when this started that we couldn't have a rate increase. So, everybody had, the three agencies had to be on board because we couldn't have one agency. As you know, with Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority, they make up 50% of our water and sewer rates generally. We couldn't have them looking at increases and the city not looking at increases, or we'd have to absorb their increase. So, we all agreed that we would, um, postpone our rate setting uh, with no, um, rate increases for the next fiscal year utility budget. Uh, utilities are monitoring revenues and customer watering usage. We, uh, initial, um, usages indicate that residential usage is up a little bit because people are at home. But our commercial usage and UVA usage is pretty, is pretty low, is pretty down. But we're about, only about three weeks into reading this, so we don't, we have some data, but, um, we need about a month's worth of data to draw any conclusions, which we're continuing to look at. Just, uh, just to summarize a little bit and what I wanted to emphasize, we have focused on utility, staff health and safety, um, and made some adjustments, uh, while continuing to perform, to provide essential utility services. We haven't seen any changes to regulatory compliance regulations. Um, we are consider, we have to continue to get our consumer confidence report, has to be out by the end of June. And that is on schedule to be released, um, in a few weeks to the public. This can too, this can contains, uh, input or in, input into the water quality, uh, standards and things that we have to, uh, provide to the cus- our customers. And, uh, we haven't seen any relaxation of inspections related to State Corporation Commission. They continue to inspect our crews out in the field, which can provide some undue stress, but, um, we have to, uh, continue to comply with regulatory regulations. Uh, we've got all of our staff working, providing over 50 essential tasks. And we continue to support the development construction area as well as continue our capital improvement plan work with inspection services. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Well, thank you for the update. Um, we really appreciate that. Uh, I have a couple of questions to, um, start. The, just in around, um, employee, um, safety. Well, first a statement about the one week on, one week off. I really appreciate, um, hearing that and I'm glad that you all have been allowed the flexibility to, um, ensure that, um, whatever works best within your, um, you know, individual departments that you are able to do to meet the needs of, um, your, um, employees. And I'm glad it worked out that the other half of the team didn't have to be called back in. Um, but do have some questions around, like, when, um, uh, you know, I've seen, um, the crews a lot, um, out and, you know, how cool those trucks, um, you know, used to be. And so, even now, um, there's still very close contact by people who are not in, you know, the same, um, family member, any more than one person is in a, um, truck at a time. So, what's the protocol that's been put in place, um, while they are riding in the truck? Are they wearing, um, you know, gloves and masks? And are you all doing temperature checks and things like that? What are some of my questions?
Yes, we are doing temperature checks and self-monitoring is required for the city policy on a daily basis. Um, we, um, for interaction with customers, we make sure that they have customer masks. But, um, we've tried to minimize the number in the truck, um, to a maximum of two people. Um, so we don't have the four or five people in a truck anymore. But most of the time, it's on, probably, I would say 80%, maybe 80, maybe 85% of the, of the staff, though, it's usually only one to a truck.
And they are wearing, you know, masks and stuff and doing the rides or no?
Um, I, you know, I need to check that. We're not really requiring them to do during the rides. We are requiring them, though, um, uh, per our policies that they have to make sure that everything is sanitized in the truck before and after they get in. And, um, um, we are looking at providing some additional cloth masks as they come in. Um, the, um, the FEMA has providing water and wastewater operators and gas operators masks, and they are supposed to be in this week, um, and we're gonna provide those to our employees.
Okay, and I can imagine that it's difficult, and I've seen people out working on, um, you know, sewer lines, and I've had them close to my house. I, I know how close contact they come in, you know, with each other. And, um, I know that it would be hard at times to, you know, keep those distancing, especially if you're fixing something and something else, you know, um, breaks and you need more hands to contain it. Um, so I, and I've had family members work, you know, in that field. So, I know, um, you know, I've heard those stories, so just wanna make sure that, um, you know, whatever can be done to minimize, um, you know, their exposure since they're going back home to their families, that we're considering that.
Yes, yes, we are.
Are there any other questions?
Oh, just, um, thank you, Lauren. Um, in terms of the rate setting, you're saying that there will not be any, it'll just kind of, that process won't happen this year. It'll just be held steady until the next, next year at that same time when normally we'll be doing that.
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct. Um, at this point, every, so per, per city code, the, the existing rates stay in place until you adjust them. So, um, the, we just won't make that adjustment, and so the existing rates will stay in place.
Sorry, thanks. I just wanted to confirm that for the public. Let's say thank you.
Great, okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate.
Uh, the next individual is Marty, uh, Selman. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, movement in our public works department, uh, and he keeps it going. Uh, and, uh, not gonna delay his introduction, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of work, uh, that continues on a day-to-day basis with our public works department about the city. So, uh, Marty, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you very much, Dr. Richardson. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, my name is Marty Selman with Public Works. Um, I'm just gonna, uh, start by giving a general overview of what we've done within the department as the whole, and then I'll kind of break into some of the division-specific efforts that we've, uh, implemented or services that we've changed as a result of, uh, the COVID-19. Just some high-level stats, um, just for information purposes regarding our staff. Um, we have a total of 56 staff that are still coming into work every day. Um, a total of 43 staff are teleworking, and we've got around 20 staff or so that are in a, a resting reserve slash available state. Um, and that number fluctuates depending on, um, needs that arise, uh, from day to day, depending on what may come up in the streets. You know, if there's a pothole or something like that that needs to be built. Um, there's approximately, uh, 10 staff members that are directly assigned to positions within the city's Critical Incident Management Team under Chief Baxter, um, that is working on, uh, COVID-19 efforts. And that's in addition to their daily jobs, and so a lot of our folks are, are pretty well-tapped between their normal day-to-day activities and also in support of COVID efforts. Um, and there's a lot more than those 10 that are directly assigned to specific positions. They're providing support, um, uh, within the operations section, logistics section, and the infection control section. And so, you know, just across public works and, and in its entirety, there's a lot of efforts being, um, kind of exerted on COVID to support the CIMT, um, in addition to their normal day-to-day activities. Um, those folks that are working are using PPE. If, if their environment warrants it, and they're, they're showing the exercise and any guidances from, from the CDC, um, we're doing the self-monitoring as required by city policy. Um, we actually had one of our, uh, systems analysts, uh, create, um, a process for staff that's working remotely to report their daily temperatures, um, so they can get up in the morning and take their temperatures, log into the, to the app, and then kind of report their, their temperatures, and it all stays confidential with our, uh, coordinator that does the self-monitoring. Um, the Public Works Admin Desk is currently closed to the public at this time, um, but we're still monitoring phone calls, emails, mass email reports, et cetera, and we're still able to respond to and address issues that arise such as, uh, street line outages, potholes, nickels, things like that. Um, most of public service, uh, public work services are still intact, uh, with only operational efforts being minimized since many of those efforts involve crew work that, um, they're unable to do while performing, um, social distancing, that six-foot separation. Um, so things like our concrete crews, for example, um, aren't currently, um, doing any sidewalk repairs, for example. Um, but for the most part, a lot of our services are still being provided. Um, and a lot of the public work services are considered essential as they have a direct impact on the condition of our infrastructure, um, being the buildings, the roads, the environment, where they provide a needed service to the community. Um, for example, trash, traffic operations, infections. Um, Public Works has also been working closely with the budget team in the City Manager's Office on CIP and budgetary impacts. I won't go into detail on that one, um, but there's, there's been a lot of meetings, a lot of conversations, a lot of time invested on looking at our revenues, our expenses, um, some of the ongoing projects that we have going on, what could be put on hold, what has to be before, et cetera. Um, as far as our division-specific efforts, um, the first one I'll touch on is our Engineering Division. Um, all of our inspectors are still working full-time, um, four or five days a week, depending what their normal schedule calls for. Uh, they're having some modifications, uh, to their work approach. You know, for example, they're largely just working directly from their vehicle. Um, they can always do their inspection reports and things like that. They're using PPE. Um, when interacting with contractors, maintaining, uh, six-foot separation involving CDC guidelines. They have hand sanitizer wipes and things like that to keep the vehicles clean, um, but largely kind of very independent of what they do normally, which I know sometimes gets kind of tough. I've had a lot of conversations over the last, you know, several weeks with inspectors and, um, just wanna talk sometimes, um, so it's always good to hear from them. Uh, the majority of engineering staff, project managers, project managers, and the program administrators are teleworking. Um, there's a lot of Zoom meetings, as, uh, many people have mentioned. Um, they're still communicating with consultants, um, and customers. A lot of virtual pre-construction meetings, uh, planner views are still going on. A lot of the engineering functions are being done just remotely. Um, for our environmental and facilities development division, um, most of those folks are, uh, actually, all of those folks are teleworking at this point. Um, but as with a lot of the professional staff, um, that have, you know, office jobs, for example, there's, there's the, the Zoom meetings and the WebExes, uh, of course, the, the normal, you know, the phone call, you know, one. Um, the facilities development folks are making the occasional site visit, um, as necessary, uh, for, for any projects that are underway. Um, they are practicing CDC guideline, um, when they do that. And the facilities development folks also, uh, work with the infection control section of the CMT to develop SOP to give guidance to contractors working in and on city facilities. Um, so I know that's one of the new SOPs that was created, and our, our FD folks had a, had a heavy role in that. Um, facilities maintenance, um, a lot of credit needs to go to facilities maintenance. They've probably, within all of Public Works, have had probably one of the biggest, most active roles during this pandemic. Um, you know, custodial staff, for example, you know, they continue to work under pre-COVID schedules to support ongoing city operations. Um, they actually increased a lot of their cleaning and sanitation efforts back, I think, in late February, early March, before any state of emergency was called for. They started looking at ordering additional sanitizing materials and equipment and bleaches and things like that to sort of assist with what we kind of thought was gonna become the number two. And I'll also just take a minute to, um, really thank those custodial staff. Um, I've heard a lot of good things from folks, um, throughout the city uh, about the hard work and their dedication to this, to this whole effort. So, um, thanks for all this. Uh, maintenance and repair teams and within city facilities are operating with a skeleton crew, um, on a rotating schedule. So, as with a lot of folks, um, we're trying to limit the employee interaction amongst staff and, um, kind of rotate folks in and out and give people time to rest and, um, you know, kind of recover. Um, as many of you know, there's been some, uh, contracts procured for facility cleaning. This is just in a situation if it is needed. Um, and then we're working with, uh, the voter registration office, other departments to install things like plexiglass screens to protect staff, um, if there's any, you know, public interaction and things like that. Um, and then there's the, uh, handful of folks within facilities managed that are teleworking as well. Uh, with the Fleet Division, um, operations are largely the same, except the technicians have been divided up into two shifts. Um, again, to just kind of limit that exposure to one another, um, and prevent spread. Um, and the, the priorities have been adjusted to focus on, you know, there's been direct support of COVID efforts. like police vehicles and things like that. And public service, a few folks work in telework, teleworking. Our maintenance crews are operating with a skeleton crew, again, on a rotating schedule. We're still responding to issues that arise in the right of way. Like I mentioned earlier, potholes, sinkholes, trash issues, dead animal reporting, things like that. There have been some changes in service delivery. We, we did, as a result of the city hall being closed, we had to develop a mail-in process for folks to get trash stickers and decals, and that seems to be working pretty well. The large item pickup program was initially suspended for a couple of weeks, but that's now occurring every other week instead of every week. And what we've done with that is typically we have two people in a truck. And so we have one person driving the, what they call the call truck or the boom truck, and then the spotter is riding behind them in a separate vehicle to keep those from getting too close to the manor. And we're monitoring the number of pickups that we're performing, and if the, the calls or the need warrants, if we go back every week, we're, we're able to accommodate that. Street sweeping is currently on hold, but we hope to be bringing that back in the next week or two just to prevent the heavy accumulation of debris on the roadways. And that's a task that we've evaluated, and we've decided we can easily perform that task and keep employees safe and maintain social distancing following CDC guidelines. Routine scheduled maintenance work is currently on hold as it typically involves a five-to-seven-person crew working with a six-foot, within a six-foot radius of one another. And so at this point, we're just responding to immediate needs. Like I mentioned before, potholes, pavement patches, clogged storm drains, things like that. We're also still trying to stay ahead of the weather. And if there's a significant storm event that's coming, we're trying to get some folks out there to kind of clean those storm drains in advance of that. Our admin team, our entire admin team is pretty much directly supporting the CIMT, most of them within the Logistics Section. But beyond that, you know, just teleworking, and there's no reduction in staff for the Public Works. Looking forward, Public Works will continue to work with the Critical Management Team with the city and follow the state and local situation to ensure our efforts align with the region. Will likely continue to maintain stagger schedules to limit employee contact until the situation warrants otherwise. Will continue to coordinate with the Ravenna-Sallow Waste Authority and Admiral Calley on joint projects and budgets. Will continue to analyze work processes to bring back services and operations with increased efforts to limit spread and incorporate the CDC guidelines. As I mentioned earlier, we have to restart street sweeping on Wednesday, the next week or two. So you'll see this crews around in the mornings. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that update. And Dr. Richardson, just one point that I won't lose that thought is, you know, as someone who's called the facility maintenance in early morning hours, to hear, you know, that they are still at, you know, kind of their pre-COVID schedules, they would also, I know we would, you know, consider this for, you know, everyone, but when we're looking at like front lines, even though they may be in buildings primarily, you know, alone or in spaces where it may not be considered because that team would not, you know, be maybe offered the flexibility that some of the other teams have been offered. I would just want us to keep track of that so that we could, you know, have that conversation in the future too when we're talking about, you know, whenever in the future we can talk about hazards pay or bonuses or whatever. So I just didn't want to lose that point. But Marty, thank you for the update there. And it's good to hear, you know, the safety protocols that you all are putting in place. That's the, you know, main focus, the, the safety, and then making sure that, you know, that those staff members that you can offer those stagger schedules and that flexibility that they are able to, you know, get some time to care for themselves and their families. So that would be the only comments I have at this time. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, thank you.
You go, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Marty. I just was curious. You kind of laid out a lot of things relative to, you know, how, how much things are kind of working forward in this environment. You mentioned the street cleaning is one of the things that hasn't been happening. Can you, just for the public's kind of understanding and grounding, what other things can you just, can you identify as, or don't anticipate having that come back right now? Or other services that the public might be looking for that just we aren't able to provide right now?
Certainly. So the, so the street sweeping, like I mentioned, we're going to try to bring that back in a week or, in the next week or so. That's something that we can easily do because those guys, folks, for the most part, they work, you know, in kind of in a solid scenario where they come in the mornings, they get in their sweeper. They typically come in for some breaks periodically. We can, we can have them break, you know, elsewhere so they don't, you know, come into contact with other folks that may be in the office. Some of the other services that right now are suspended, you know, typically we have folks out there doing, you know, a lot of pavement work, a lot of concrete work, you know, some pavement remarking, for example, or installing new crosswalks, things like that. There's a lot of usually work that kind of precedes the repaving schedule. A lot of those have been temporarily suspended or only doing those as the situation is absolutely worn. For example, if there's a bad pothole that's a traffic hazard, for example, we'll bring in a crew to, to address that. But because a lot of those crews, they were, you know, five to seven people, all within very close proximity to each other, we're more concerned about the safety of our employees right now. If we defer some of this maintenance for a couple of months, you know, it's, it's not the best approach. Deferred maintenance is never the best approach, but I mean, we can, we can get by with that and get caught up hopefully.
We see the same kind of applies to sidewalk repair as well.
Correct.
You mentioned that, really. I just wasn't sure how that fell into the thing.
Sidewalk repair is not currently happening right now. Again, because in order to do that, you've got a five-to-seven-person crew that's working within close proximity. If there is a situation where there's an extremely hazardous, you know, break in the sidewalk or heave or something like that, we can bring somebody in to respond to it. But a lot of our proactive efforts have been pretty much tabled at this point.
Thank you.
Add a question. I know, I think we've all received a number of emails and communications about people asking about temporarily expanding pedestrian and bike opportunities, particularly with reference to other cities that, because of the decrease in traffic from the stay-at-home order, have been able to temporarily close roads or streets in order to make it easier for people to do social distancing while walking or biking. Just curious if, you know, I know that's been explored a little bit, if there are any potential opportunities that have been identified, as well as what are some of the, the challenges that exist for making that a reality here locally?
Certainly. So, yes, we, we are actually actively looking into what, what opportunities may exist. One of the things that we've seen is that a lot of the localities that have done this are larger metropolitan areas where the population is a lot denser. So I think it's a little bit more pertinent for those kinds of localities. There's a number of things to consider. You know, the, the interaction with vehicles and pedestrians can, can be obviously very dangerous. And so we have limited equipment, traffic control equipment, to really, you know, adequately separate a pedestrian from a vehicle. For example, you know, typically pedestrians have the protection of the six-inch concrete curb. They're, they're on the sidewalks. There, there's a very clear delineation between the pedestrian area and the vehicular area. But we, we are looking at some options. We've got a couple ideas of locations we'd be able to just close completely. Of course, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen. Even if we find, identify streets that we think we can make this work, there's a lot of coordination that has to happen with emergency services because obviously that affects how they get from point A to point B. Again, the, the safety aspect is going to be our pretty much primary concern in making sure that the users of those areas will be safe from, from vehicles. Our traffic control equipment, again, you know, we're, we're a small community. We have limited traffic control equipment, and to do long corridors, the closures, for example, will be, require a lot of equipment essentially, whether it be cones or barriers. And so we're, we're also looking, reaching out to other localities that have done this and trying to figure out what some of the parameters of immediate decisions were, in particular as it relates to the safety of the bikes and the peds that will be kind of in that roadway. So I, I guess the short answer is yes, we're definitely looking into it. I've been working with the Traffic Engineering Team pretty much daily. There's been a lot of correspondence going around. I know there's some folks who've been listening in some webinars and things like that that have occurred to try to gather more information. But it's definitely something we're interested in, but we just want to make sure that if we do it, we're doing it correctly.
Are there any other questions?
Again, want to say thank you to your team and for everything that they're doing. I know so much of their work is behind the scenes, and most people don't see it, but we rely on it every day.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, and we appreciate it, and the same thing that I've said to, you know, every director. We know that they are, are people who are having to risk their safety. And they're, by doing that, they risk the safety of their family by coming to work and performing these essential duties. And we are aware, and as soon as that we can figure out a solution to that, we will, but we understand that that includes a lot of people from your department too. And so just, you can convey that we understand that and that we are having those discussions. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
We have two more presenters. The next up is Chief Brackney. Chief Brackney?
Good afternoon, or actually, good evening now. So thank you for hosting us, Dr. Richardson and Mayor Walker and the rest of council. Before I started, I just wanted to really take a moment and reflect on the recent tragedy in our community with the death of Dr. Lorna Breen and the impact that it's having, not only just here in Charlottesville, but across the nation as we think about this current pandemic and the effects it's having on frontline workers, whoever those frontline workers are, as well as first responders and our healthcare professionals. And I also just want to acknowledge that the work in the, that around COVID-19 may not be immediately evident to a lot of our persons because it is a behind-the-scenes work. We continue at Charlottesville Police Department to serve this community. We also are serving the city and staff and our regional partners in very different ways. And I just wanted to start from the beginning, saying how proud I am of our team and the work they perform under very extraordinary circumstances. So the first things I would like to update you on is just our operations. All of our personnel are assumed, are deemed essential personnel, so they don't have the opportunity to telework from home. That doesn't exist for us, so we've had to be very creative in the way that we have attempted to alter their work schedules so that they are not overlapping with each other and then possibly exposing each other to contaminants. We've been extremely creative and created basically cohorts and how they respond to different calls. The station has been closed to the public, and we actually did this very early on, on the advice of reaching out to chiefs in the West Coast who are experiencing COVID-19 exposures. Our first one in Seattle, working very closely with the Chief of Police in Seattle on what measures she put into place early so that we could start to protect our staff from exposures. With the exception of mandatory warrant services and fingerprinting, our front desk window is closed. However, the public can still walk in and request assistance. We do have a doorbell option where they can request that, and we also have cameras so that we can see. Our recruits were pulled from the academy, that were currently in the academy, which we were relying on very much so to be able to support our officers. We've been down a lot. However, what we've done is become very creative. Instead of putting those officers off and not being able to work, we've actually put them through some very rigorous field training so they now can support, and were certified and were sworn in last week to be able to go out into the streets. We will have another set of six so that we can also maintain never having more than 10 in a room at a time. That will be sworn in this Friday as well. That gives our other officers opportunities to rest, but it also keeps our recruits very viable and able to serve the community at a time when they're needed. So look for that. We've switched to virtual roll calls. Those occur either through email, through Teams, or for Zoom so that we can get out that information that needs to be disseminated among all of our teams. We've expanded our online reporting options where our citizens now can report crimes online. And then we've also expanded our telephone reporting. In case a person does not have access to internet or the forums, they can call our non-emergency number and then speak with an officer who will take the report over the telephone. We are screening the type of calls that we respond to through ECC. That's our Emergency Communications Center, where there are a list of questions that they will ask of the 911 caller. As soon as they can get that information, it is safe to do so. And we are asking about any persons who may be sick in the home. Although that is not, as we know, the best indicator of possible exposures, it is one of the things that we're doing. We're asking individuals to step out of their homes and engage us if it's safe to do so so that it's less likely that we introduce our officers into a household where there may be infections or exposure. We have our, we've changed our enforcement options and when officers are coming to homes, we know it is important that we support the executive orders 53 and 55 that have come out from the Governor's Options Office. But we also know that it's much more important to educate our communities so that we are all socially responsible and that we do that in a way that benefits our community and doesn't criminalize behaviors that we have always encouraged throughout society around physical distancing. We now have limited access to our, our gyms and our locker rooms, and that is something that is a challenge for us, that we may need support for as our officers are limited to three persons in a locker room at a time so that we can continue to distance. But also, physical fitness is very much a part of their routines and activities. And our personal gym that we have here is very small, so we now have to have online sign-ups for them to use the gym and no more than three persons in it as well with constant decontamination. That is in effect. We have limited our sharing of vehicles, so the vehicles are assigned to that person so that they can guarantee that we don't cross-contaminate. All of our vehicles are decontaminated at the beginning and the end of the shift by the officers. And then if we have a transport, they are decons according to CDC standards so that we can decon each and every one of our vehicles. We take our temperatures prior to entering the building, and that's recorded and logged at all times. In addition, we have mandated that our officers wear their personal protective equipment at all times. So you'll see them out on the streets with their mask on and their gloves because the opportunity to put those on during a crisis does not necessarily exist. Unfortunately, because of the way that we are moving, discretionary time is reviewed on a case-by-case basis, but we are allowing officers to use that so that they have the opportunity to rest and recuperate. The additional step that we're taking now is not only just to protect our officers, but to protect those that we come into contact with. And that includes officers carrying additional masks so that when they have to arrest an individual or bring someone into custody, that we supply them with a mask immediately for their protection as well as that of our officers. And I'll talk about a little bit later how that may be impacting our personal protective equipment and what our burn rates are. As the Charlottesville Police Department has taken on the responsibility, we're not only just a department, but the entire city, to obtain PPE, track burn rates and things of that nature. Our infectious disease and exposure protocols are extremely robust, and we've been able to just recently leverage some of our relationships to have our officers tested. As you know, like everyone else, we were not able to have access to testing, and instead, we're having to put our officers off on quarantine assignments, and they were self-monitoring. We have been able to be pushed in front of the lines if our officers believe they have been exposed. It's documented and that they're getting tested very quickly. So we appreciate the relationships that we've been able to do as a result of that. Unfortunately, we started out behind the curve because ECC requirements when it came to exposures and possible exposure for our officers. The Department of Health was not able to share if there were exposures in a household, if there was someone they were tracking. Though any first responders or emergency responders or DSS who might have been coming into a home to provide services were not being provided with that information. There is now mandates that that is provided so that we are aware not if someone has COVID-19, but if there is a high risk and we're being told to what type of protective equipment we should be utilizing when we're responding to those calls in those homes. So there are protections for the community so that no one knows what it is, but we are being afforded the opportunity to know that there may be an infectious environment there and to make sure that we put on protective equipment. We are currently leading the efforts right now for the city to make sure that we have face masks, face coverings, gloves, the Tyvek suits, the booties, contamination. And when I say booties, I mean the ones that you put on your feet. Decontamination supplies for all of our workforce and even our regional partners. We are currently have taken on the responsibility, in addition to their other ones, of tracking what is our burn rate and why that's going to be important for when we run out of equipment. The surgical masks, gloves, not just for the department, but throughout the entire city, who are we requiring to wear those those equipments. Charlottesville Police Department was also tasked, and we worked very closely with Kakademic and her team, for what does alternative housing and shelter look like for our vulnerable populations, our shelter populations, but also for our workforce, the city's workforce. If there's the possibility of exhaustion from having to work shifts and not able to return home, could we shelter individuals here closer to the workspaces? But also, if there was contamination or exposures and we didn't want officers or city personnel returning back to their home, what kind of support could we provide for them? We've been very supportive in our community, drop-off initiatives and efforts so that we can coordinate resources that may have to be distributed back out into the community. And we've taken the lead on messaging, actually locally, regionally, and nationally on how do you protect your citizens? And with our efforts to manage these stay-at-home orders, which are very controversial across the nation and of course, in this region. One of the things I'm extremely proud of is that we've been partnering with our local community groups, particularly Brave Souls on Fire, 100 Black Women of Charlottesville, and City of Promise to assist with the distribution of masks, anxiety and stress relief kits, which I understand that grant was approved today so that we could help with that. Essential goods that people need in their homes. And then one of the things I really want to talk about is our mental health efforts for our officers. We are not talking a lot about mental health and how we can support our staff. So I have taken the initiative and we have a contract with a police psychologist to now have four virtual roll call sessions in which our officers can zoom in as to what services can be provided, both individually as well as within group sessions. What are some coping techniques that our first responders can use to manage for themselves? What are those signs of stress that we may be missing because they're used to operating under stress at another level or at a level? But then what happens as they're operating on even more severe conditions than they are because they're worried about taking exposures home to their families, infecting or possibly exposing other persons to that? And then what is that support that we even have for family members of our essential personnel, or as I call them, our mission-critical personnel? All of our personnel are essential. Well, what are those mission-critical ones to address this? And if the city could even think about what does that mental health look like for those persons who are staying at home and performing their functions, right? That there starts to be additional stressors about not being able to leave your home. Your work environment feels like it's possibly closing in. You feel socially isolated and as well. So we want to think about that. We have some pretty serious challenges that I'm concerned about when it comes to our staff and even the city staff as well as there's no real ability to disconnect from this. So either when you're working at home, in your space, or when you go home, you still have the shelter-in-place come here, you know, stay-at-home orders, there's no ability to disconnect. This has impacted our service delivery models. More importantly, what types of cases that we now have the ability to investigate? And we want to be really thoughtful and intentional about that. There are types of calls that we are no longer responding to in person that really have been a benchmark of our services, like, you know, accidents in which no one is injured and you're just exchanging information. Now we're doing those things over the phone and, you know, the community does not necessarily respond to that when they want an officer to come to their accident scene. And how do we do that? Larcenies and nonviolent calls or calls that have been in the past that are not currently in progress. How do you give the same type of customer service when you're talking over a phone, when people really do want to see an officer and feel reassured that it's going to be okay and that they are being heard? One of our challenges right now is when it comes to personal protective equipment, the N95 equipment and the fit testing. So I know they've done the fit testing in the N95 equipments for a lot of our healthcare workers. But as Chief Baxter indicated earlier, there has to be very specific fit testing. And who would use that, that equipment and how that equipment is distributed? I would also like to think about what does support for all of our first responders look like? And maybe that's a conversation that has had amongst the council and with Dr. Richardson in a real and meaningful way for all of our team members. And I know I've heard Mayor Walker now say that they are thinking about that, but I think it would be helpful to reduce some of the stress levels for not only our city, but our city employees to have a much more concrete, thought-out plan as to how we might do that. And then the next thing I wanted to think about and have been thinking about in our service delivery models is this is a great opportunity to how we no longer reintroduce or how we can reduce the number of individual or individuals that we introduce into the criminal justice system. We've worked very hard with ACRJ, the Commonwealth Attorney, the Public Defender's Offices so that we can reduce the population, and that's been done by almost 25%. And we have more people out in the community. Now, that does provide additional requests for CPD to intervene because parole and probation may not be going out. And I know Home to Hope is also helping with that, but what does that feel like and look like if we can support that, that community so they don't reoffend or now that they have that opportunity to stay out in the community? For some of the things that we need to look forward when we start to rethink our operations. And this is going to be something that council is going to have to wrestle with is what does competing priorities look like for us, both locally and across the state? And what I mean by that is there are some legislative initiatives that are out there as well as some political ones that may call or draw upon all of our resources as we're going to manage those priorities. One of them that is currently on our radar is what happened as a result of the liberate the states and protests across different states. How that's going to impact us here and in Richmond and our ability to support those type of, or even protect our citizens against those type of protests that bring with it a lot of history when you see the type of persons who are coming to protest the liberation, reopen the states. And could those things be in competition with the recurrence of COVID in the fall? As well as in competition with legislative initiatives here in Virginia and in the in the city around the monuments and the Second Amendment? So we are really thinking hard about how we will be able to deploy our resources against competing priorities and what that, that support will look like in the future. I know we've been very visible on social media about efforts for people to stay at home, to go out for essentials, but to stay at home so that literally collectively, all of the that you've seen so far in the personnel can, can still continue to come to work. So I will, the only other thing that I have is our team is, they are amazing, resilient personnel who are coming into work every day in spite of some of the challenges that they're facing. And so far, we have had six officers that we've had to test for exposures. And of course, that causes a lot of uncertainty and fear during those timeframes. But we appreciate the community who has shown an outpouring of love through either, you know, dropping off thank you cards or donations in terms of food donations, et cetera. So we do appreciate those efforts. And I will take any questions that you have as though I know we have a lot to wrestle with. Not only currently, but what does that look like for the next 10 to 12 months where this city is going to face a lot of challenges?
Well, thank you for the update. I agree, you know, and have been talking about the, you know, long term as Chief Baxter said earlier, the ultra marathon, which anyone who's done any running, I haven't done past a four miler, but I feels like and how taxing it is. And that just rolls right into the full and complete understanding that the officers as well as the statements I've made about the other departments, that their mental, physical, spiritual, emotional well-being is a daily thought. And I know that thoughts are really meaningless, especially since most of the time they, you know, are there aware because I'm making the statement now. But we are not communicating, so I'm not communicating with each and every one of them, so they have no way of knowing what my thoughts are. Having those conversations and I've been understood very early on when especially fire and police were impacted by the change of the two and a half times of pay that, you know, that was crushing to a lot of them. Council did understand from the management and the budget team's perspective of the fact that we're in the ultra marathon that it would be difficult to sustain a two-and-a-half-time pay rate for the long, but we know that the nothing that is happening now is also unacceptable and that we will need to figure out a different strategy. And so it's not just like internal thoughts, but active, you know, questioning and asking, you know, how and the when. And I know from the conversations that and statements that other council, councilors have made that they understand that too. And we are all, you know, sorry about the fact that we haven't been able to figure that out for staff who are risking their, you know, safety and their family's safety in ways that others, even as busy as I am, as a council member, I am pretty safe. You know, and I'm not out there day-to-day. And I know that even the work that I'm doing is very different from their work and want to acknowledge that as soon as we can. And so it's in the discussion that we're having along with that bigger discussion of like what happened today at UVA Medical Center that we want to try to avoid having to furlough or lay off as long as possible. So those are the discussions that we are having.
So thank you.
Just wanted to mention, you're like tactical. You mentioned you are limited in capacity in terms of where your, your team can work out. It's a very limited facility. As we transition into Todd next, can we not leverage our own parks and recs facilities where we currently don't allow the public to go work out for your officers to go to Smith and work out on a regular basis? I'm just sorry, thinking out of the box. I just feel like we have these facilities, they're not being used by the public. Can't we let our officers use them?
And I had that note too, and it would be Smith and Carver.
Right, sorry, both, yeah.
But I was going to ask that of Todd once he gave an update because there's still would be things that would, you know, have to happen to make sure the spaces were clean.
No, I agree.
And thank you for that. It's kind of the notes that I had even was the why option, or there's some other places where we could, could do something like that. And even if it was doing a schedule, the same as I currently do with our, our workout facilities, that we guarantee these are the times they'll be there and and sign up schedules. But they definitely need, and I'm sure the fire department and a few other places too, could benefit by our city employees having a place to work out. Because they have physical standards they must maintain and, and a few other things, and it becomes much more challenging to do that. Or as creative to do it as, as I think we would like to be able to do.
Well, and also, um, physical exercise and dopamine. And if people are already having a hard enough time, having that physical exercise also increases dopamine, which decreases depression and anxiety. I also wanted to ask, were you able to secure emergency housing for any officers who might be exposed, they're not exposing their family members?
So yes, we do have those opportunities available as well. And again, we haven't reached the point where we've had to do that. The testing has come back very quickly. And because we had implemented policies and protocols that they must have their personal protective equipment on long before, you know, we declared emergencies here. So that was extremely helpful, but we do have that, we do have that available. We have it. We're city personnel also have that option. And again, we have the option, if any of our personnel, this is throughout the city, who are coming into work physically every day, coming into work and just are reaching exhaustion between traveling, traveling back and forth so that they need to stay close by. The one thing that again, I would really want us to think about is if we do have anyone who's isolated, quarantined or something, that what does support for their families look like? So that during that time where they're not able to connect, how do we support families as well for any of our staff members who may be experiencing undue hardship or stress as a result of the current pandemic?
I had a, just one quick question about what enforcement entails for not individuals, but businesses. You know, I haven't gotten too many, but there have been a few people who've reached out saying, you know, this business seems to not be following an executive order. Just, yeah, just curious what that enforcement looks like? Is that enforcement just through the Charlottesville Police Department? Or are there other city departments involved in enforcement of the executive orders at that level?
So the executive order that exists and even for clarity, I've had a lot of conversations with the Commonwealth Attorney and Mr. Blair about these. So the executive orders 53, the governor gave local municipalities the ability to enforce his executive order. So we've taken an educational approach to this first, understanding that these are desperate times and that we understand that people economically may be suffering, so they may be willing to push the rules. But understanding that if they do that, the likelihood But understanding that if they do that, the likelihood that we stay in these, stay in home orders increases because our community exposure increases and community spread increases. So our approach has been this, when the caller calls us, I'm a calls nine one one to say that they believe there's a violation, we document that at nine one one. ECC then notifies our non-emergency number and we then call the business and tell them that we've received a nine one one call that they are in violation. We explain the executive order to them. And then we also tell them that this call will be reported to the health department. So that they know, the health department typically regulates whether it's a restaurant and then the businesses, there's also these merchant license. So we can find out to where those business licenses have been issued from as well. So that's the first approach. And it's all about education to say, what's the benefit to these orders and why they're important that they're in place? The second component of that is if there is a repeat offender, even at a residence or at a business, that we do the same procedures again. We make the notifications, we make the calls, and we don't go in person unless we absolutely have to. And that another component of that is at that point, we also include the Commonwealth Attorney in the loop as a repeat offender. So we're taking the educational approach and then that's the way to notify it. We tell people if there's, they believe that someone is violating either the ten or more or it's not an essential business that should be open at this point of ti- or point in time, please dial our non-emergency number, the four three four nine seven oh three two eight zero number, report that to us and let us go about educating and not criminalizing behaviors unless we absolutely have to enforce the executive orders. Because it is important that we do, you know, we do enforce those if we have repeat offenders. Are there any other questions?
I just want to again, say thank you to you and your officers. If you can't think of anything that we can do in the near future to help support, please let us know.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, we had another note that I forgot, but that partnership between, you know, the Commonwealth Paternity's Office, ACRJ, you, the reduce the population at the, you know, jail and all the probation parole, even our human services team. As, you know, Kathy mentioned earlier, who's, you know, working with some of the younger people who have been in, you know, facilities. You know, that's just really a partnership that's, you know, appreciated to make sure that those individuals are in as safe spaces possible and understanding what an outbreak at a place like jails and prisons and we've been seeing some of those on the news nationally, nationally. And I'm glad that both the county and the city work really hard to reduce their numbers. And Nelson County, since my last update has jumped on board, that is great. And if they haven't, hopefully at some point they will.
Absolutely agree. Thank you.
Last presenter for tonight is Todd Brown, interim director of Parks Recreation.
Good evening. I want to start off by flipping it around a little bit and answer your question first. I will go ahead and I made a note to call Chief Brackney about using gyms and we'll try to work that out. Also, I want to thank you all for allowing me to update you on what Parks and Rec has actions we've taken as well as our plans for the near future. First of all, in March, we started off with closing facilities, our playgrounds, as well as tennis courts and basketball courts. We canceled the scheduled athletic field use as well as our outdoor restrooms were closed. Meadow Creek Golf Course closed as well as skate park. We also, a little bit later due to some compliance issues, we decided to barricade off our busy parking lots of Washington, Penn, McIntyre, McIntyre and Tonstler Park. Park trails, parks, the trails and the garden plots have remained open. And dog parks have also remained open with a ten person restriction. Some of the actions, once you have those actions taken, we need to communicate. So we have installed signage at all the closed facilities and the park areas. And we also inside installed signage on social distancing importance at all our trailheads. We've provided a lot of information through the social media outlets. We've also coordinated cancellations with athletic groups, our other community groups and other organizations. We've worked closely with police, Public Works and other departments on our compliance issues. Consistently, we've discussed up and updated options with Almar County and other multiple local, state and national agencies. And we work within RPA as contributing with national surveys, webinars and group chats. Through our programs, we've had suspend all our programs, our special events were canceled or postponed. And we suspended the winter market and delayed the opening of the city market. As far as our staffing, this is combined with our park staff and our recreation side of the house. Sixty-five percent of the staff are working onsite. They're coming in for work. Twenty-four percent are mostly teleworking and eleven percent are considered restricted, non-essential, non-working employees. With the park side, which is eighty-five percent of the staff are coming in and working, they are working alternate days, doing some scheduling shifting, as well as we've gradually increased their, their time needed at work as spring has brought on many more needs than we had back in March. Several facility and infrastructure projects were delayed or ca- or canceled. Capital equipment and certain other material purchases have also been delayed. Routine maintenance is reduced due to the limited staffing availability. And staffing has spent quite a bit of their time on their schedules as well as unscheduled time dealing with the park closures and those compliance issues. The park maintenance staff have also been working skeletal crews and performing the tasks such as trash, mowing, trail maintenance, cleaning and repair tasks, plus assisting with closing facilities and the amenities and the compliance. That have also assisted with the use of Carver and Key for the emergency use. And no part-time staff were added to park maintenance crews this season as they normally would have been done. The recreation staff have been teleworking mostly and have been dealing with program and special event cancellations, refunds, planning, staffing and budget task, safety issues. They've also helped with the unveiling of the new website. Staff have also performed our normal cemetery operation task. And our program staff have created and actually implemented several virtual, virtual programs. Staff have also been participating in numerous webinars, chats and met with professional colleagues on discussing possible, the impacts of the closures, possible openings and options for offering programs and services, hopefully in the near future. Moving into the plans, some of our current plans in, in implementation right now are the virtual program. That's really happening in our great adaptive programs and some doing some esports programming. The city market has opened under an adaptive program with online sales and pickup at Penn Park. And this has been three weeks. It's been very, very successful and very well received. We are hopefully nearing an opportunity to look at opening golf again, Meadow Creek, with limited participation and a lot of protection. Emergency facility projects are continuing with our contractors and limited staff. Carver and Key not only are used for the resource, for the emergencies, but we're also getting them ready and planning for them to be used for elections along with Tonstler. And staff are checking and reporting regularly on all facilities and grounds throughout the weekend, weekend. Some of our longer or some other discussions for the future, we are in discussions with Almar County, our staff and other staff from many jurisdictions on the possibilities of or not of opening pools, playgrounds, skate park and shelters and also our courts. Also a difficult decision on what not we are able to hold summer camps and do the meal distribution, how we would do that. It is important to note that Almar County Parks and Rec is proposing not to open beaches for swimming for the summer, keep courts and shelters closed and not offering any summer programs, which includes camps and special events. Other discussions our staff are working on are how do we use our programming? How do we use our staff, existing staff for programming the service needs? Completing park maintenance needs while balancing that staff restriction. Budget expenses and revenue shortfalls are a daily conversation along with customer and visitor retention. Staff morale does seem to become an issue. And one of the initiatives that we're looking at to, to provide that safety and security hopefully is a park wellness watch program where staff would not only be greeters and orient folks and provide great customer service, but would also report safety concerns that we can implement and make some changes. With that, I will open up to any questions.
Thank you, Todd, for the update and appreciate the work that you and your team they're doing also. You went into morale and wellness watch and just want to, you know, make sure that we heard that from a lot of the, you know, departments that what, whatever the needs are, you know, for the employees to ensure that they are, you know, mental, physical, spiritual, emotional wellbeing, that they are able to perform those self-care acts along with attempting to, you know, take care of the community that there's an emphasis placed on. Our wish that that is happening and that they are being supported, you know, as much as possible to be able to do that.
Yes, ma'am. We're continuing to, you know, talk now individually with staff and to share that there are other options or other things, people, you know, other services out there that they can talk to if they do have concerns. You know, really to be honest with everybody, it is a pride issue. You know, that they, the programmers are very proud of their programmers and programs and educating and supplying the community with the service. And I think it's just, it's beating them down that they can't offer that service to, you know, our tremendous audience and, and all the difference audiences. And even on the park side, you know, honestly, it's killing the guys that, you know, the parks don't look great, that the all the grass isn't mowed and we need it and, you know, that they can't show off their great work on these restricted areas. So I think that's kind of what's beating them down more than anything. And, you know, we'll continue to talk with them and work with them, you know, and try to get through it.
And, you know, fully, you know, understand that, but, you know, safety and priority. And I hope that everyone understands that, that that's the main priority. And with the conversations that we're having around, you know, summer decisions and, you know, at the the public understanding how to set up, you know, summer for their families, you know, when we can make that decision. And I know I've had a, you know, conversation with Dr. Richardson about that, that is more and absolutely one hundred percent aligned with what you said the county is contemplating. And that it would be difficult with all the unknowns surrounding COVID for us to, you know, operate as normal during the summer or, or provide any services in certain areas. And so I understand how busy the teams are during the summer, especially as an employee of, you know, one of those departments within the department. And so fully understand that, but the safety of the citizens and, you know, the employees are, you know, the first priority.
Yes, ma'am. I hundred percent agree.
Are there any other questions?
Speaking of safety, I hate to bring this up. I don't know if you're aware that a dog has now tested positive for COVID nineteen?
Man, I wasn't aware of that. A new cat, but not dog.
Yeah, it was just today. And we might want to look at regretfully closing the dog parks.
Yes, ma'am. We'll look at that. Thank you very much for that bad news.
And I was just gonna say, I just obviously every department has their challenges, but this is one of the ones that's the most customer facing when we're in a, a regular environment. And so it's obviously one of the ones that our community, especially as we go into the summer months, is going to just really miss. And so it's just challenging. I can imagine the impact it's having on staff. While many staff can kind of continue and fulfill a lot of their roles, this is a very big transition from, from the everyday for both our staff as well as the community that loves to take advantage of all these great resources that we have as a community. And so I just really appreciate the position that you're in and how challenging that is for our staff right now in a very different way than many other departments is.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
So again, that's the, you know, total wellbeing of the employees is a top priority for us. And we fully understand that, you know, their, you know, safety and their needs, you know, are the focal points of our conversation. So I hope that you can relay that to them. And that we understand how challenging all the uncertainties and unknowns are. And that hopefully we can make a decision as a city as quickly as possible for not only the employees' wellbeing, but for families to plan, you know, for the summer as best as they can. As we heard early on in the first discussion, this is an altar marathon. And so that what that, you know, entails, we fully understand that this is not going, we are not going to have all the answers we would need to have to keep people safe, you know, by summer. And so if we can, you know, just start putting some, you know, of those decisions out as quickly, you know, as we can, as soon as it makes sense, that would, you know, be helpful for everyone involved. And again, as someone who spent a lot of time in both facilities, and I know that it's your focus and Chief Brackney focused, but those gyms are still small. It's not just, you know, the symptomatic people, it's asymptomatic, you know, people and the exertion that people have when they are running or, you know, lifting heavy and, you know, what they expel from their bodies, that we take that in consideration when we are talking about the number of people that sign up to use these spaces and that we are keeping that in mind for other, you know, employees who have to be in the building with them, that, that it's not easy at all to air out Carver. And Smith is a little easier because there's a, you know, back door. But what they say about this virus and how it sits in the air, we just want to make sure that we are keeping all of those things in mind. As I've heard both of you say when you're having the conversation about the officers potentially using that, those spaces.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions for Todd or comments?
Just to reinforce, like the city market, what you guys are doing with that has just been spectacular. I mean, with all, I just didn't think it was possible that it could, you know, go as smoothly as it have. And I just, I'm so excited to see the community really embracing that system and, and participating in that way. And just really glad that can be kind of a, a win-win for both the farmers and for this community. So thank you for all the efforts of you and your staff on that.
I would definitely share that with them. Incredible group.
Way to go to creativity.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Richardson and then see if the council has any questions for you before we close out. And thanks to the public. I'll just say we're almost at the end, but thanks for sticking with us. This is the first time that we've heard from all the department heads at once. This is the first time that we've heard from all the department heads at once besides the individual relationships that council has. So it took a little bit longer, but we appreciate him. Hopefully you received some of the information that you were looking for too. Dr. Richardson?
That concludes all the speakers for tonight. And I don't have anything left in terms of having discussed with the council. As it relates to COVID.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Richardson?
I just want to talk more, I know that we talked about touching on the boards and commissions plan. So I just thought if we could just kind of touch on that while the public is still engaged, that we are gonna, sounds like we're gonna try to set up another time to talk about that more deeply. Obviously, we've gotten several inquiries around land use decisions that involves our planning commission. But just to reinforce with the public that, you know, every board and commission that we engage in electronic means does take a lot of energy and time from our communication staff. And so we're gonna be really diligent about prioritizing what those things that we're opening that, that up for. And also, just as Ms. Creasy texted us earlier, remind ourselves that for those land use, if there's any community meetings, we have to also make sure that we're supporting those opportunities for the community to engage before it even gets to a deciding body. And so I just think this is part of a more robust discussion that we, we do need to have around our broader boards and commissions. But I, I do know that right now, planning commission seems to be the one that we're getting the greatest feedback on.
And ju- just for the public's benefit, if you could maybe, the city attorney, just really briefly go over the changes that have come at the state level that are opening up potential new changes for us with boards and commissions, because I know a lot of people aren't aware that any of that's happened.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Last week, on April the 22nd, the Virginia General Assembly met in, what's called the veto session. But the veto session includes not only vetoes by the governor, but also the governor makes amendments to the budget process, to the budget that was presented to his office by the General Assembly back in March. And there are actually two bills. One is called the caboose bill because it applies to the remainder of this fiscal year, fiscal year 20. And then there's the bi- biennial budget, biennial budget, which includes fiscal years 21 and 22. And the governor, I think in response to COVID-19, made amendments to both the caboose bill and the biennial budget. And the amendments were identical. And it stated that electronic meetings can be held by public bodies to accomplish the lawful purposes of those bodies. So, you know, FOIA, as we discussed back at the March 25th meeting, when council adopted its emergency. FOIA only permitted the discussion of items related to COVID-19 in an electronic format. And that applied to any public body. They could meet, I believe our Economic Development Authority did meet to discuss specifically challenges related to COVID-19. The council's emergency ordinance that it adopted on March 25th also allowed the council, pursuant to the Attorney General's opinion issued March 20th, to discuss essential functions at its meetings. We had a discussion at that time and my interpretation of essential function is, again, things that keep the government running, such as budget, tax appropriations, things that are just have to be done to keep the government running. These amendments, which the governor proposed on both bills and the assembly approved last week, will allow the council and other public bodies to consider matters in addition to essential functions. As Counselor Hill noted, Ms. Creasy and, and I know Mr. Wheeler, in order to increase and, and try to ensure citizen participation in, let's say, a planning commission meeting, Mr. Wheeler's staff's going to have to be involved like they are with council meetings to get the webinar set up, other means to allow the public to participate and view the proceedings. And so, you know, again, the council can, can start to consider matters beyond essential functions now at your meetings, the electronic means, and public bodies can as well. But again, the practicality of other commissions and boards meeting is largely up to the staff as well as, again, Mr. Wheeler's staff in particular, having to staff, having to provide the webinar technology and other means so the public can view and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Update. So council, what, you know, I think that we would, first, this meeting has taken a lot longer than we anticipated. And as Counselor Hill discussed, we would have to have a more robust discussion surrounding what I think what, you know, what the boards and commissions can be, get input from staff about scheduling, when the communication office is available, understanding the supports that they're, you know, giving to city staff, not wanting to, you know, overburden them either. That this will probably require definitely more than we can handle tonight. And that we should consider having a work session, scheduling a work session for that. We received a list, and I don't know if the three new counselors received that. When we were talking about the review of boards and commissions. Anyway, while we might not finalize that discussion, it will probably come up during the discussions about what boards and commissions do we, you know, allow, you know, to meet first and why. And we know how active all of our boards and commissions members are. So I think doing that in a public format, so people hear the rationale and are able to add and provide input about how they view their boards and commissions would be helpful. So what are your thoughts about, about that?
I think it's gonna take definitely more than what we've got right now.
I think it's important for us to at least give the direction for staff to start to pull that information together so that we can make some informed decisions in that regard. But I guess I'm also just curious if there's, like, obviously specifically, like, we've talked about planning commission. I would like to specifically know what hurdles it would be for that to get put back on track again and for them to start meeting virtually so that we can continue to have land use decisions processed.
And so, and for me, I have that, this, make that decision with, in whatever holistic way that we could, instead of just talking about one board and commission. Because we know once we allow one, we're gonna get the call. So I just think having that discussion, getting the input from staff members who sit on the boards and commission about what they think the challenges would be. We need to know the schedule. We need to run that schedule by Brian and his team. Who will have to make sure that the communication piece happens within these boards. And if we, if there's a longer list of boards who we would prefer to not meet at this time, that we would need to discuss those publicly and get feedback. I can imagine that a lot of people will either write or call in before or during that work session to share their, you know, ideas. And so I just think we should do it all.
I don't disagree. I guess my question, I mean, back to Mr. Blair, is the planning commission, because when we originally said that in this emergency state, that there's certain things that we aren't gonna have happen. But now with this governor's shift in priorities, do we not have some legal obligations for land use? Do those timelines now get reenacted? Or is because we passed that ordinance, we don't, we don't have those timelines?
No, due to your ordinance, you still don't have those time.
So if there is agreement among council, then if Ms. Thomas can work on scheduling a work session and there are some other budget. Dr. Richardson wants to have another budget work session. And then we have the budget meetings Friday. So that'll be three within the next, you know, week or week and a half that we'll have to have, but we'll try to get that scheduled the, at least by the second week of May, as long as all the counselors are in agreement and to have that discussion. And in the meantime, if Dr. Richardson, if he can gather that information from staff about boards that they participate in and if they can talk about, you know, what challenges they foresee, their recommendation for starting it or not, that will help. And then during the work session, we can get input from the public and the committee members who sits, sit on those boards. And we may even want to reach out to some of the committees beforehand and get their, you know, feedback. So we can talk about that more. But if there is agreement there, then we can start working on the scheduling.
I agree.
I agree. I'd also like to see, to make sure that we've, any of the boards and commissions that legally have to meet so many times a year, that we're making sure that everything's kind of in accordance with them.
I'm just curious, we know what our agenda's looking like on Monday, like how dense it is?
At this time, at this, at this time, we don't have much on the agenda. But I, we do have what until tomorrow to actually finalize things. And I would ask Kena if she's, she receives any additional items from the last time that we spoke.
I'm just asking, because now eventually, now it sounds like we can actually talk about things outside of COVID during our regular council agendas. And I'm just trying to get a sense for, you know, and if we don't have, if we have a really light agenda, I wouldn't mind taking advantage of Monday to have some of these other conversations start. If that's, unless that's too soon.
I don't have the agenda right in front of me, but it is fairly light, more items on the consent agenda at this time. I have not received any other items for the regular meeting besides some related items to CBBG, which I think you've seen already.
I think in terms of, I think we should just have that conversation and figure that out once the internal conversations with staff happen. And then we need to figure out how we get the feedback from the boards and commissions, which I think we should get some of that, you know, try to get some of that beforehand to, to, so that we are not getting all that information at one time. Unless we want to use that time for them to give us the initial information, but not making a decision on Monday. I think that's the.
And then relative to budget, I mean, we're planning, are, are we gonna be discussing budget again on Monday as a group?
Not Monday, but I do, I would like to have a work session on Tuesday.
I'm gonna get a little selfish about that. If we can do something on a Monday night when we don't have anything planned, I just personally would rather just do it all at once than chunk off another afternoon. I mean, I'm not, if we have enough to cover both, but if we are, if we're gonna screen meeting briefly, I just would rather us try to consolidate some of this stuff. For, I'm thinking about our communication staff and the fact that they're having to set up these meetings.
I would love to also, but, you know, once we leave from one meeting, we have to gather our information to prepare for the next meeting. As I mentioned before to the mayor during the break was that, you know, we're, are, we have limited time to get to the finish line, so to speak, in terms of adopting the budget. So any additional time that we have above and beyond when we have our regular meetings, I would like to do that. But as you can see, like tonight's meeting, it went a lot longer than expected. And, you know, staff, these are directors who are putting these budgets together, who we're working with. So it's a lot of time and energy going into it. And I just want to give them enough time to, you know, recoup from certain meetings and then be able to move on. And I'll get with you later on after I get done talking to the mayor tonight more about the meeting schedule moving forward. I mean, but as you mentioned, that is an opportunity. We could do it. But it's all according on, you know, what, what, you know, what do you have in place? What do you have planned?
Is there anything that we could talk about on the budget on Monday night?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that. But I also, you know, we'll, we'll talk. I have to get with the mayor on that. So we'll be able to define what we're gonna be able to do.
I would just say that I'd like to see us get as much done as soon as possible, rather than keep putting it off and putting it off. Because I'm concerned that we're gonna end up putting off some of these budget discussions until a time when we don't have enough time to really assess what are, what the options that are that are going to be presented to us. So if we can get this done on Monday, I'd like to try to get it done on Monday.
Meeting notice will go out tomorrow for Monday's meeting. So if I could have that information in order to include in the notice, that'd be great.
On worst case, we can have just a general line item for the 2021 budget and give us flexibility to talk about it in whatever capacity we want. Mr. Blair, is that correct?
Certainly, you can have that as a line item if that's the council's desire on Monday.
I wasn't meaning to suggest that I wanted to specifically talk about the budget on Monday, though I'm happy to do that if, but I, I was saying, I thought, I thought the question was dealing with this question of boards and commissions. And I was intending to agree with Heather that if we can, if we can get it discussed on Monday, I'd like to try to. If we can't, we can't.
And so my concern there is that we know that this is not just gonna stop with planning mission. And so unless we're saying that's the only board that we consider, we will be piecemeal versus having, you know, the robust discussion, giving commission, you know, potential to write in and express their concern. We already had hack members reach out to us. I know that I've been asked about the CRB. So there's no way that we are going to be able to just, hey, we decided planning commission only on, you know, without getting that feedback. And I don't have enough information at this time. And in the conversations of, you know, taking into consideration that staff are also trying to survive a pandemic, if we don't have to rush them on items, then I would prefer not to do that. And I do think we saw what happened after we made the decision to try to, you know, change the structure of hack or not, or just even consider that, the feedback that we got, you know, from that. So I, even if there's a part one and part two, work session one, work session two about this, I just think being able to tell people what our plan is overall would, would be key. And I don't know if that we can get that information by Monday. And if we can, then we can. But I also don't, would like for us to not stress, you know, staff and into that. But if it's something simple, and we can look at scheduling and what the meeting days and what Brian Will and his team will have to do to accommodate public input for those boards and commissions. And if we can figure all that out by Monday, then, but I think that would be a little challenging for staff.
I would just say my preference would be for Monday to at least begin a discussion about what, if anything, we want to do with boards and commissions relative to these new amendments from the governor. Strictly limited to that issue of electronic meetings of boards and commissions and not get into a larger. and not get into larger issues about the structure of boards and commissions. Um at this point, with an understanding that, you know, we might not necessarily be making a final decision on Monday, but at least begin that conversation, because it seems like the most immediate question is just what if any boards and commissions do we allow to meet electronically? Um and I'm, you know, we'll get, whenever we have the discussion, we'll get into it. But one of my major concerns with any decisions we make about boards and commissions is just the fact that every department has totally reoriented around COVID nineteen. The budget process is totally upended with a fast timeline that it needs to be finished by. And that allowing boards and commissions to meet to do regular businesses could add just a lot more work on top of these emergency fires that all the departments are having to put out with COVID nineteen. Um but again, whenever we have the discussion, I'm sure we'll get into that in more detail.
And I, and I agree, and you know, from being here, you go into any of those meetings, there's a lot of time and, you know, consideration um by the community members who sit on those boards and um commission. And I just want us to be able to explain um as fully as possible while we're making the decisions we're making to be clear about those decisions, not for us not to backtrack once other people start calling in or emailing to say why not us and why them. And I just um, you know, think we need to be um very considerate about th- this process because it's not going to be as simple. We know we live in a community that um that they don't just take, um this is what we decided and that's it. We're gonna get a lot of feedback about it. And so the more thoughtful that we can be upfront about the process, it'll just save all of us um headaches that no one wants to deal with um at this time, because we already have a lot. And I think we also owe it to people who have been um serving the community in that way to be um more thoughtful and not to rush the process. And to give staff time to figure out how did the new process and how to keep, you know, the safety standards and what that would change um, you know, for them, for the boards and commissions um members to meet. If you're, you know, talking about um planning commission, we're talking about having the um, you know, the attorneys um um meet with that group, the um missy sits um, pre-si sits um, you know, in on that. Um they coordinate with the member that sits on it from UVA, what is that person's um position even? You know, right now, I think there's a lot of questions. Um and then three council members have to be a part of that um, you know, you know, meeting too. And um I, I'll do it. I know all of you will do it um too, but just making sure that what staff has going on right now, we heard from them, um that we are not challenging them more. And I, and that we fully understand we won't just be able to make a decision about one board without explaining why we're making that decision.
Uh and I agree. Um again, I, for me, my preference would be on Monday, we begin that discussion as a council with an understanding we're not making a final decision. Because I think the sooner we jumpstart that conversation, the better. With the understanding that initially starting that conversation as a council doesn't mean that we're immediately making a decision. Um but I just think the sooner we start that conversation, the sooner we'll be able to start getting that um input and feedback from the community and boards and commissions.
And I agree with that.
So what I'm asking is that it's Wednesday, basically. It's the end of the night on Tuesday. So we're asking staff to get these, this information together in their schedule um by Monday, um and to get a way to get feedback from the boards and commissions themselves, and that's soon. So we can do that, but I think that it, we have to also consider that it is um additional um information. And we don't have enough information at this point to make that decision.
I think as a starting point, just hearing like at a very high level from staff on things that they think are really time sensitive that we might, they might want to have considered. I mean, I think there's some boards and commissions that are like, you know what, we get it. We just really, this is not a priority right now. I'm, I'm just, even if it's just a very high level input from staff on those that they participate in, just so we kind of have a sense of what's the lay of the land, and maybe this is a non-issue. It's not gonna be hugely debated. I, I agree with you, it probably will be. Um but I'm just, I just think, I agree. I think we have to have some starting of this conversation sooner versus later.
And to me, jumpstarting the conversation doesn't mean we need all feedback from all city staff and commissions to start that conversation.
Agreed.
Um because I agree, you know, there's just not enough time to get, you know, every piece of information by Monday, but I just, I, I just think the sooner we s- we start the conversation, the sooner we can start to get to that point. But again, that's just uh my preference.
Senior Lloyd, did you have anything on that?
Uh, nothing other than what I've already said. I, I, I think to start the discussion doesn't mean we have to finish the discussion. I don't, frankly, at this point, I don't have a good enough sense of what I think the discussion is gonna entail. I, and maybe just simply because I'm new at this whole business and I, and I can't see the field very well. Uh and maybe the, maybe the answer is to, to say to the staff, take a stab at this question and see what you can come up with that we can profitably talk about on Monday night. And if we're not to the point on Monday night where we can profitably talk about it, let's not force it. But if we can get it started, let's try to get it started. And I admittedly, that's not a, a firm directive to anybody, but it's a, it's a way to move things forward a little bit, I would hope.
And so there seems to be agreement there, but I'll just say that staff does not take um, you know, suggestions. They will spend their time doing this work um and trying to get it done by Monday if um what the three of you have sa- stated. Um so they're not gonna dilly-dally with it, they are going to do it or not. And so we're asking them to get something done. Um and so that just needs to be clear with how it works.
Well, Dr. Richardson, can you identify a point person who could just kind of get a feel from staff on how complicated what we're asking for, just to get this conversation started? Like who can be a point person that can kind of just start to do some feelers out with staff that can just, so we're not taxing everyone?
I'll work on it. I'll work on it. Get a person.
Just like take a stab at a list of saying, okay, well, it's obvious this board doesn't need to meet right now. And even just like, instead of even thinking about who should meet, who shouldn't meet? I, I don't know. I mean, like, just looking at, you know, does the Parks and Rec Advisory Board need to?
No.
So we glossed that one off. Does Jabba need to meet right now? Um.
Well, that was not our decision. That's an outside board. So actually, that's out of our, a lot of these are not even on our plate because they are run by other agencies. Like Jabba continues to meet, they just do it remotely because they have a lot more flexibility.
Okay, there seems to be consensus that we are going to, you're gonna check with the point person, and then I guess you'll let us know. Um, I mean, if um Kena needs the information by tomorrow, um I don't know if you can get that information.
You can just put on the agenda and uh try to make it happen as best I can. If I can, I'll let you know.
Mayor Walker, this is um Ms. Thomas. Um I do, both Brian and I have a list of the staff liaisons for those boards and commissions. Um most of those liaisons are a go-between and would not necessarily have input on who should and should not meet, but they could um speak with the chairs of those commissions.
And what we do is take that list and basically send it out to all the folks who, you know, that are liaisons to those boards. Also, you have some liaison uh to certain boards too. So uh you have to have that conversation also as we're doing our due diligence on our side.
Yeah. Which is a lot to do for Monday.
Yeah, it's a lot to do, plus budget stuff, but um I'll work with Kena.
I just, I really want to make, to emphasize to staff that this is, this is not something they're supposed to prioritize. I mean, this, this, if, if it's on the agenda, it is just for council to start discussing, not for them to even necessarily need to give us that, any information.
And I'll, that, okay, I'm tired. It's been a long day. That's kind of a mixed message, but that's where we are. And how about we'll just hear from Dr. Richardson maybe by Thursday, whether you think um um the information that you gathered since then and we can make a um chime in and decide whether um we're gonna move forward on Monday.
That's fine.
Is that?
That's fine.
Works for me. Okay.
I just don't want to be using their valuable time right now. I mean, I want them to be able to have time to actually have a weekend.
And I'm, I am, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, I just get a high level to hear from staff, like in a five-minute, like exercise. With the boards and commissions that you support, what do you think are the urgent needs of those boards? That's all we're saying. And I just want to raise, like, this is an issue I brought up last week, and so it takes some churn and to get through these things. But uh once the governor made that decision, like the pressure was on for us to just consider that. And so I don't want us to put it off for two weeks.
There isn't pressure. And if they're outside or who are pressuring systems to conform to the normal that it is, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing the well-being of our um staff and citizens over that return to normal um counselor hill, in my opinion. All right. Thank you all. We have um, are there any closing comments by any other council members or um staff?
I'd just like to say um, thank you um for the opportunity to share more about our overall operations that we've been undertaking uh since uh the declaration of the emergency uh dealing with COVID nineteen. As you can see, a lot of time and energy uh is, has been put into this. And it uh continues uh to this day. And uh, you know, as was previously mentioned, uh we don't know how long this uh may last. Um so uh what I try to do as much as I can is try to preserve uh our employees uh the best of my ability in terms of, you know, the workload and different things like that that they have. Uh because as you saw in various departments, uh we have still a lot of work out there to do. Uh we're rotating staff in and out uh to be able to uh conduct uh those day-to-day operations. Um so uh it's a challenge and it'll continue uh as I mentioned for the foreseeable future.
All right, and thank you. And I'm sorry, I missed um opening it up to um public comment. Um so Mr. Willer, is there anyone um who has raised their hand or however that system worked to speak?
Sure, we have eight people left on the webinar. If anyone is interested in speaking to council, just click the raise your hand icon. Mayor Walker, no one is raising their hand at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any um further closing comments, council?
Well, I just, sorry, go ahead.
Just, Dr. Richardson, I really want to thank you and, and the entire city staff. Um through this uh meeting, I have definitely seen how creative and caring and amazing our staff are. And I'm just, it's, it's, I hope everybody else who's been out there watching sees that too. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's been very impressive.
Thank you all.
Yep, we have an incredible staff.
And I would uh, I'd reiterate again, you know, I've had a lot of people from other localities, elected officials and community members reach out to me um looking to get information about what Charlottesville done. I think, you know, there's always a lot more work to do, but I think we have been statewide leaders in the municipal response. And um I've said this before, but I think it's important for all of us to be able to step back. We get bogged down in the details, like even in this discussion, the boards and commissions. But when we step back, everything we're doing right now is about saving lives. And I think when we look at the big picture, the actions and decisions that have been made have saved lives. And I think that's um something very important that's part of all this.
Any other? Yeah, so um again, thank you. I didn't um, um Dr. Richardson and um Ms. Shelton and um sorry for, I know your very, very long days. Um and I didn't see um Paul, but I'm sure you're um
Paul's there.
Mr. Ovador, we're out there. Um just limited faces on the screen. So um appreciate um you all um putting this together and look forward to chatting with everyone on Friday.
All right.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.